So council, I'd like to call this committee the whole meeting for November 16, 2021 to order with adoption of the agenda. Someone want to make that motion? Counselor Flott, Counselor Brooksville, all in favor? Motions carried, moving on to adoption of the minutes of the committee at the whole October 14th. Someone want to make that motion? Counselor Shalat, second by Counselor Brooksville, all in favor? Motions carried, any business arising from those minutes. Seeing none, I'll move on to announcements from the mayor. So we all know this past week, we're now into winter. And so just advising the community, pay attention to our bylaws. It's your duty to clean your sidewalks in front of your home and/or your business. And we want to make sure that when snow removal people are out both on sidewalks and on the street, that if you can move your car out of the way so they can get it done, it would be appropriate. If you're impeding snow removal, you can be ticketed. So I just want people to be aware of that. And also, we do have a bylaw that prohibits you from taking your snow out of your driveway and onto city streets. So be wary of that. I've seen that in the last year. So it caused problems for people to drive them down the street. And then all of a sudden, there's this big snow pile in the middle of their driving surface. So just want you to be aware of that. Also, this past week, MLA Doug Kluftjacker and myself had a Zoom meeting with the VC Utilities Commission discussing gas prices here in Rebelstoke. So the VC Utilities Commission is already have boots on the ground trying to define why Rebelstoke is consistently 20 cents higher than our surrounding areas. So they're going to be working on that and have been working on it for a period of time. We're hoping to have a draft report by year's end and possibly a full report by the end of March, actually telling us why our gas prices are higher. We don't know if that will help us to lower prices in our community, at least to those in our surrounding communities. But we're hoping that that will definitely work. So just be aware, we're looking at that for the community. All right, I'm going to go on to delegations and presentations. Parks, Rec, and Culture, the Facilities Master Plan. Ms. Danato, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilors. Today, we have a delegation with us. Catherine Barris, the lead consultant for the Parks and Rec Master Plan, will be providing an overview of the feedback we received during the community consultation process. So thanks, Catherine. You can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, Your Worship and Council, I'm going to share my screen. Oh, I'm disabled. Is someone able to make me have screen sharing?
Our staff will do that for you momentarily.
Okay, thank you.
Danato, so go ahead, Catherine.
Okay, see the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Perfect. So I'm going to run through, there are a lot of slides here. This is the entire sort of summary of everything that we heard, but I'll run through it quickly and happy to answer any questions at the end. So we had three main types of engagement. We had a community survey. We had workshops, interactive workshops, one of which was with you. We had a booth at the farmer's market and we did interviews. So I'll share the community survey results first. Main thing, this is a bit of an update on what we did, but we had 546 responses and an additional 151 responses for a survey on mountain biking. Even though we went back and forth with this survey many times and tested it, somehow biking was omitted from the first survey. So we did a supplementary survey just so we could pick that up. So beginning with what are people's activities prior to COVID? Walking, biking, jogging on a path is the top activity with participation by 97% of respondents. Next was swimming somewhere outdoors, followed by visiting a park just to relax. And you can see all the rest. We asked people about whether their change in use had changed during COVID, and 37% of people said it increased. Few did decrease. And we asked people what's their anticipated use of parks and trails after COVID, and 40% said they thought it would be higher than it had been previously. We had a question about satisfaction with a very long list of outdoor amenities. And top is nature trails with, so here we're reading, the dark blue is satisfied, which is the most important bar here. The red, I guess, is also important to know is unsatisfied. So top for satisfaction are nature trails, swimming in lakes and rivers, paved trails and gravel trails. And you can read on down from there. The one with the highest dissatisfaction is outdoor washrooms. We asked about participation in indoor programs and events. The highest one here is public swimming, followed by indoor events, and followed up drops down quite a bit to public skating, and then all the rest. We couldn't ask about use during COVID because everything was closed, but we asked about people's anticipated use after COVID, and 26% thought their use would be more than it had been previously. We asked about satisfaction with programs and activities. And top of that list is aquatic activities, followed by fitness. And actually curling is higher than we see at most communities. We asked about satisfaction with indoor facilities, and the aquatic center is much has much higher satisfaction than any of your other facilities, interestingly enough. Well, maybe not. Might be clear why. And then we asked about sort of priorities for city improvements. And this was really an open-ended question, so I'm going to get into the comments. But in terms of the topics, outdoor activities and parks and trails came out highest in terms of needs for improvement, followed by indoor facilities. So we had a lot of open-ended input on this survey by design. City staff wanted to hear the details. It's quite a task to theme all of this, but what we do try to do is put things into themes. And in the brackets is how many people commented on each topic. So, and there are five sets of these slides. So the first one was about outdoor activity opportunities. We had the most comments about biking, with the highest there being build a local pump track or skills park. Next, most important topic overall was recreation amenities, and disc golf course comes up top there. Underwater activities, updates to the boat launch, community events have more live music, and comments about accessibility for all ages. Next, main topic area was what would you like to see as improvements in parks and trails? Just talking about the pathways themselves, more connected paths, more trails, more paved paths, all of those come up very high, well, pretty high. More bike trails comes up very high, even though this wasn't the biking survey, we did capture these through the comments. And definitely more connectivity in the system. Under parks and green spaces, we had many comments asking about dog parks. And then other features and improvements, we see our comments about washrooms, and then accessibility. The next topic is indoor program opportunities. What comes up top was climbing gym. Actually, climbing gym is showing up right now under Programs and Facilities because it's an activity. And so we were seeing so many comments there. We've included it in this section. Class options are mainly focusing fitness, dance, but really quite a sort of a range there. Options for teens, requests for more childcare, as well as teenagers. Timing and schedules, people wanting different times for some of the opportunities. And then we see the music and art coming in there. The next one, indoor facilities. So under facilities, very high number of comments related to a climbing gym. And then all the other ones are actually much lower. Updates to new facilities, we have fitness, better fitness area, and then updates to the forum coming up top on that list. And just really few comments on the other ones there. And then we had another category. And this is really picking up a lot of similar themes to what we had on the previous slides. We asked people what's the best way to send them information. Social media, Facebook, Instagram came up top, followed by the website. But 31% for the newspaper is actually quite high. So people are still using traditional means in the community. We asked about the best ways to fund parks and facilities. Grants and donations comes up top, followed by partnerships. And then you can see the rest with property tax, not too surprisingly, being at the bottom of that list. And we asked for other funding ideas. And tourism, using tourism revenue comes up pretty high with various ideas there. Community level fundraisers and grants, looking to developers. I can see things there. And then the final was an open-ended at the very end of everything. And again, some of the same comments, dog park, et cetera. So yeah, parks and trails, I think, I don't think there's anything new here. Well, there are some very minor comments, but the major themes are really similar here to the ones I've already talked about. Go through that. In terms of who responded to the survey, it was quite a good distribution of age groups. Actually, quite a lot in the 30 to 44 age range, which is often families with children. So pretty happy about that. We asked about the ages of children in the household and got quite a wide range there as well. 51% of respondents own dogs, which is high. Okay, and then some highlights of the biking survey. Participation in biking in that survey is obviously very high because I'm sure we attracted that group. Satisfaction with the biking opportunities, we have 35% satisfied and 39% not satisfied. And what are the challenges and opportunities? And we see similar themes to the other surveys. So trail connectivity is really important. Here we see requests for more mountain biking trails connecting to the resort as the main themes. Biking infrastructure, safer biking infrastructure. So here we're overlapping with the transportation plan. So wanting bike lanes and widened pathways for biking. And we see the other, the pump track comes up again. And then ideas about partnerships, signage comes up here and there. At the, now I'll talk a little bit about the input from the workshops and the farmer's market where we focus more on qualitative input as opposed to how many people said what. So we did six different workshops. We had the OCP focus group, we had staff, city council, PRC staff, and then we had two for stakeholders and the public. So synthesizing what we heard from the workshops and the market that kind of followed similar themes. We asked people what are the strengths and challenges. So comments are parks are really high satisfaction. People saying a lot of great things about the parks, they're diverse, they're clean, the green belt is wonderful. There are lots of trails that people love, and particularly the groomed trails in the winter along the river. Some of the challenges, people felt there were some neighborhoods that were lacking in parkland, not enough off-leash dog parks, trails not well-connected enough with each other. People concerned that increasing development is taking away some of the trail areas and places they think might be parks, or they're being used like parks. Lack of some maintenance on trails in winter and signage and wayfinding. So that was all about parks. And now input strengths and challenges related to recreation. So high, great groups, well-organized sports and recreation opportunities, lots of options, good partnerships, well-used facilities, the spaces and venues are there for people, and that there are some low-cost, low-barrier opportunities. The challenges for indoor recreation, aging facilities, some people feel the cost is too high for participation. Sometimes there's crowding, operation hours aren't flexible enough, indoor spaces aren't meeting all needs. And here we see the climbing wall coming up again, and not all venues are accessible. And then the final thing we asked people was for input on the vision, all these different, mainly in the workshops. And so these were the main themes we heard about the vision, inclusive, affordable, accessible, lots of parks that are well-maintained, adequate, well-designed facilities, environmental protection, and trail connectivity and walkability. People talked a lot about walkability downtown as well. And then finally, the interviews, the organizations, we interviewed organizations who we felt really were important in terms of service delivery, and especially reaching out to populations who, you know, have fewer opportunities. So we talked to Community Connections, the Youth Liaison School District, and Aboriginal Friendship Society. And comment themes there were that there are lots of opportunities, but there are still barriers to participation for some members of the community. Cost, transportation, and stigma, and that they would like, these groups would like to see more opportunities being made to allow for inclusivity for all members of the population. And that's it. So I will stop sharing. I'll share if anybody wants to see anything again. Any comments or questions?
Counselors, any comments, any questions?
Maybe, Counselor Elliott? Yes, thank you, Catherine. I think it's a very thorough report you presented. I just have a question. The number of comments from the public seem to be very minimal. The maximum you've got is 160 in one particular area. We have a population 10,000. How much weight do we put on those interviews as a direction for our town?
So not everyone takes the time to complete open-ended comments. So I think that in terms of looking at representativeness of the community, the responses to the tabulated questions are better at giving you the overall perspective. We look to the comments for, you know, additional insights and getting a better understanding. And we combine the survey input with analysis and looking at best practices and lots of other, you know, kinds of work. We're not just looking at the survey. So that's also something to think about. So really, the comments are helping us understand some of the other responses and helping to really understand what some of the, you know, interests are in the community.
Any further comment?
I just wanted, if 160 is the maximum, and just, maybe it's just participatory participation by the community isn't robust. And that kind of disturbs me more so than what you've done. I think it's great for the information, but I just, if that's all we can get, it's kind of concerning.
Well, it gives us a start in which direction we should go. Counselor Shalat, you have your hand.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the feedback, especially the mix of the qualitative with the quantitative, like beyond the surveys, there are these focus groups in the interviews. I'm wondering if Catherine can share, do we know how many people were involved in the focus groups and then in the interviews? Is there a number?
Catherine, any comments on that?
Yeah, through Your Worship, we'll give you the number, but I'd say it was, oh, the number will be in the report. We probably had an average of maybe 10 to 15 in each of the focus groups, and there were four interviews. So, yeah, so, but I really do want to say that getting over, well over 500 respondents to a survey for a community your size is actually incredible participation. We were really, really pleased with that. And like I said, I think that that's the people who fully participated, whether or not they chose to add comments to the open-ended questions.
Counselors, any other questions or comments? Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, Mary Souls. Thank you, Catherine, and thank you, Lori. Now, I note some of the comments was around the loss of connectivity. And I'm seeing that coming up in the master transportation plan as well as sense of to developments. I think that's really where the core need of this plan for parks and recreation, the trails and that kind of use, is so that we identify those. So if I was to use an example, Mackenzie Village, I think there was a loss of opportunity, both for the developer and for the community of connectivity of trails. And so when, as development happens in the community, when we look at the heartland contributions, that those areas are already identified instead of taking cash. And I know I'm talking some of the planning stuff, but that's, that's why this is so important, this work. I noticed on the, in your slides, there's a picture under the vision input. And so this is a test for you, you might not be able to answer it. Where's that picture taken from?
Lori helped us with the photos. It's along a river. It might be the, I don't know.
We labor it. So I think it might be the Jordan River. And that was a controversial aspect earlier this year. And again, it's an area that we are at risk of losing a huge community asset. And I don't think, Counselor Elliott, that that's an exaggeration. The, so that's kind of, you know, I think maybe there's a little messy piece in here that wasn't identified. I'm not sure when all that, when was the survey completed?
Lori?
Through Your Worship, I believe it was the end of July.
Okay, yeah. So anyway, just that's more of a comment. And then the next question I have is, so that's great report, great survey. What are the next steps?
So we, through Your Worship, we are currently working on the first draft of the master plan. And we will be providing that to staff within the next few weeks, after which we will work on revising it with staff. And it will go out to the, for public review once it's ready, probably in the new year. Lori, did you want to say more on that?
No, I think that's pretty much it. Those are the next steps.
Good, appreciate that. Any further comment, Counselors? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Barris. Appreciate your work and thank you for presenting. Mr. Danato, anything further from your perspective?
No, thank you, Catherine. Just perhaps before you leave, if you could give control back to Jamie, so that we can carry on with the meeting.
I don't think I have control. Do I need to do something? Oh, here, there we go. Thank you. Sorry about that. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Catherine.
And this is to ensure protection of municipal council members and our employees, so that if, if for some reason someone chooses to sue us for the work that we do on behalf of the city, the city will look after making sure that we have proper representation and support us through that. And it's the same for, for our staff as well. In discussion with our legal counsel, our legal counsel basically said, very important to have a proper indemnification by law, and supported us updating things. So any comments, any questions from council? Counselor Elliott?
Just curious, where this originated from? How did it come out?
The indemnification?
Yeah.
Well, there's always been a certain expectation that should any of us be doing work on behalf of the city and we get sued, that we would be covered. However, some things get outdated as years gone by. And so with our new CAO coming in, looking at some of our outdated bylaws, saying we need to bring this up to par with what is being done across the board in other communities, and what is being done throughout municipal government. And our legal counsel has supported that. Definitely needed to update things to make right.
Yeah, I was just worried that, you know, the legal world is generating work for themselves. I might take, if it makes sense, then let's go after it.
Yeah, and so in my conversations with legal, basically saying, okay, Gary, what have you got? They kind of looked at what we got and said, yeah, you could update that. And that's kind of what we're, okay? Anything further regarding that? Counselor Palmer?
So I did have a question I neglected to ask earlier, but I was curious to see the old bylaw 2139. I will be looking at this. I'm supportive of it. It looks, it looks good. I've read through the bylaw. And just to answer Counselor Elliott's, this is for your protection, so they don't take your house away from you when you make a mistake as a counselor.
Mr. Palmer, I would just wonder how we got, why was this addressed about much sooner? How did we even get, how did we become vulnerable? That's what I'm wondering.
And I think kind of fresh eyes with our new CAO coming in and looking at some of the things that hadn't been looked at for years, saying it's gone. And then just, my conversation's confirming that this was looking on.
And then further to my 2139, so this was done before, and I'm just not sure what the difference is. If it was really easy to email that to us, that'd be nice.
Just wait, can we look after it? Good, all right. Seeing no further comments, we're going to go on to 9A Staff Reports, Organic Waste Diversion. So Mr. Black, we'll leave it with you and your colleagues to fill us in on how we can divert organic waste from from the landfill to organic waste area.
Thank you, Your Worship and Council. I'm going to, I have a very short presentation. And then we'll have some time for some questions. And in addition, we have Maggie Spaziri from Bear Aware on the, on our meeting today. So she's also available to answer questions on where we're going and where we're, where we've been and where we're going. So let me go back to And I'm assuming you can see my presentation?
Nope, we can see you, but we can't see Prado. There we go, it's starting to go.
Thank you. In one day, about the time we'll be back meeting together in public, I will actually have figured out how to make this work. My apologies for that. Anyway, here we go. Organic waste diversion. So we, as staff, from beginning. This year, council had a mandate for our staff to initiate the process to become a bear smart community. And in fulfillment of that council desire, staff has prepared this report. Where we are, we pick up refuse from about 3,000 homes in the community. We only do residential. We have one garbage truck, two staff members that pick up garbage. Residents provide their own containers. Our budget is about $360,000 a year, and the cost per household is about $122. This spring, the CSRD will be opening a composting facility, which is really good news. So it means that we can take organic waste to this landfill. So to become a bear smart community, we need to reduce the interaction between humans and bears in any way possible. we need to reduce the interaction between humans and bears in any way possible. What are the criteria? Identify bear habitat. I think Rebel Stok probably just fits in that area without too much further explanation. We need to identify the strategies to reduce conflict. And we need to update our documents in order to ensure that we do everything that we can to minimize bear human conflict. We need to educate the public, which is always a fun thing to do, and it's constant in this community as we do have a lot of bears. Where we are today in this report is item five, and that is we need to figure out how to do a waste management system that addresses the bear issue in this community. And that means bear smart, bear proof containers. It also means that we provide a mechanism to get the organics out of our garbage and provide a way that people can get that composting to the C S R D. Bear proof containers for both refuse and food. We've got compliance strategy, and Rebel Stok Bear Aware currently is working on items 102. So we have a bylaw in place that basically says you can only take your garbage out at six o'clock in the morning of the day, and that everything's supposed to be put away in the evenings by midnight that same day. People are supposed to store their containers in a place where bears can't get to them. And currently, we allow backyard composting. So in order to become a bear smart community, we need to develop this bear proofed management plan. We need to implement the bylaws to make this happen and to ensure that the private sector, as I stated earlier, we collect residential. So we also need to ensure that the commercial, industrial, multi-use, family facilities, who all use a commercial carrier, are also bear smart. And we also have to have the bylaws in place to enforce people maintaining and utilizing bear safe containers to minimize those conflicts. So going back to the C S R D, the C S R D in the last year passed a bylaw or amended the bylaw to allow changes to the tipping fees. Currently, we pay about $80 a ton for garbage delivered to the landfill. Once the composting facility is operational, the C S R D is proposing that the tipping fees go up for mixed to $160 a ton. If we can separate the compostables, about $120 a ton, and the refuse would be $100 a ton. So you can see that if we do not implement compostable and bear proof, bear smart system, our tipping fees will roughly double. And that is certainly something that is not viable. We currently send about 1,000 tons a year of waste to the landfill, and about half of that is compostable. So you can see that by reducing or providing a compost service to the community that we can reduce our tipping fees also. What has been done in the past? Bear resistant containers were tried, I believe, in the late 2000s. 80 liter bear resistant containers, automated pickup, failed in the wintertime because people, I think, forgot to unlock the latches, and the bear proof containers became not bear proof containers. Many of you probably were around at that period of timing, could provide a lot more detail and anecdotal information regarding that. And then a few years back up in Johnson Heights, we tried to five yard or six meter bin for garbage, and it was pretty much abused immediately by visitors and the campers. And it became a compliance issue. So that program ended a few years back also. Other cities, Canmore is an example of a place where they place five yard bins about every 250 meters on a grid in order to allow people to take their garbage to a bin, a bin for garbage. And they also have an organic bin at the same location. So there's no fixed schedule. People can just walk down to the bin, throw their materials away, and go home. So staff there have to just basically drive around on a regular schedule and probably Christmas time and a little bit more because there'll be more paper waste and that sort of stuff. But the cost in the Canmore example is about $400 a year versus where we are at 120. So quite a, quite a bit of difference. Staff are also concerned that as we are a more established traditional city than Canmore, we have a traditional downtown core locations for these sorts of facilities do become an issue. And of course, not a lot of people would be keen to support having a bin in their neighborhood or adjacent to their property. Something to consider. We also have the opportunity here to reduce our greenhouse gases by separating the compost and bringing it to the, to the landfill. Calculations, if correct, are in total about 5,000 tons of material go to the landfill a year, and about, that's equivalent to about 7,500 tons of G H G gas equivalents. If we can divert 50%, we can make a crude assumption that we'll probably get 40 to 50% reduction in G H G gases also. I'm not expert in this area, and if council has further questions, I'll be certain to find the right people to answer that sort of question. But it's good nonetheless if we can reduce our G H Gs. So the different approaches for collection. Drop off deposit, much like the Canmore model or the Whistler model, you're getting diversion rates of typically 25% or less. And that would include green lawn materials, lawn waste, including meat and food waste. Community collection sites, typically less than 25%. And the curb side, which is what we do in our own way here. If we provide the right materials, we could be upwards of 75% diversion, and that would be very good. So in summary, we can become a bear smart community while lowering our G H G emissions. Obviously, we'll have to adjust the budgets in order to make this happen. And based on council's direction today, staff will refine the costs based upon the preferred option and prefer costs to be included in the 2022 city budget. That's my brief presentation, and if you have any questions, please, now's the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Just going back a few years ago, when we purchased the existing refuse truck, we talked about the ability of changing the box on the back or the holder for refuse so that we could do both that organic and refuse at the same time or with the same truck, maybe not at the same time. And I'm just wondering if that's still a possibility as we look at that sort of thing and the life expectancy of that vehicle at this point, if it's worthwhile? And that, I'm asking that, it kind of gives us an idea of which way we should be going. We are a very traditional community, and I think we look at how we pick up organics from the household and take them off to the organic landfill area and go from there. And I know that Counselor Elliott has asked about an update on the organic stuff I've spoken, or sent an email to Mr. Von Austrian at the C S R D. He's prepared to come and do a presentation to us. Mr. Black, regarding that, I just want to go back to the issues that are at hand. You know, do we think about putting a bin in neighborhoods? I know how well that didn't work in Johnson Heights for a number of reasons. And thinking about whether we do that in other communities to gather these wastes, or do we, you know, as in some other communities, have a bin for recycling, one for organics and one for refuse? And just going to ask you about that sort of thing. Any thoughts on that?
A couple, you asked multiple questions there, your worship. And the first one regards to the equipment that we have. I believe we are in a life cycle of about 10 years for that equipment, and so we're probably coming up near the end of that life cycle for our garbage truck. And so that's where we are with that. If we do select at council's direction, bear proof bins for garbage and for the compostables, typically these would be 120 liters or 150 liters. So they are large, large containers. In order for staff to safely handle them, an articulated arm would be recommended by staff because lifting these is certainly not anything that we are willing to put our staff in danger of hurting themselves trying to lift a 150 pound or 200 pound container into the back of the truck. Efficiency of a fully articulated arm, that would allow us to do pickup with one staff member versus the two that we have now. Cost of the system, replacing the vehicles, the new bins, all of those components will have to be taken into consideration for funding. I would like to note that there is a, currently a grant program that has just recently opened for reducing greenhouse gases. I have sent a note off to the province asking them whether or not containers would be a viable subject for us to apply a grant for. I have not heard yet, but as soon as we do, obviously, we will report back to council. That would be a huge benefit because if you look at the table in my report regarding costs, I believe it's roughly a million plus for containers. And so we can, we can then implement this at a much reduced cost to the community. And Mary, I'm not certain if I answered all of your questions.
Pretty much. I have one more question. And just in years past, we talked about an arm on refuse truck and the ability or not ability to utilize that fully in the winter season with piles of snow. And so I'm just going to ask again, is that, you know, is that clear? Are there products now that we could probably utilize? And, you know, at 120 or 130 meters or 150 meters, is that, you know, is that garbage bin on wheels that some of our residents can actually get to the curb?
Yes, your worship. I believe that the answer to those questions, the answer is yes. The articulated arms, I believe, now have a reach of about 10 feet or almost three meters. So that as long as the container is near the curb, they can actually be in the driving lane of a road and not have to be right up next to the curb line. So I believe that gives us the flexibility. And yes, these containers are large, and they can become unwieldy if they're full. However, they all do have wheels and a simple lock mechanism on the, on the top that the residents, of course, would be responsible for unlatching on the morning of the pickup.
Great, thank you. Counselor Brooks Hill?
I don't understand why we would need to get these large containers. If, like other places I've been, you have your recycling bin and your compost bin, your garbage bin, but they don't have to be that big. If we're separating the garbage and the compost into two separate bins, why do we need a bigger bin?
They were thinking about if we were going to put garden refuse and that sort of thing in the same bin.
Why would we need to?
You don't need to, and that's just a suggestion. So I'll leave that to Mr. Black to answer.
But to me, that seems like, you know, you have yard waste a few times a year. Why would you have a bin big enough you can put that in a paper bag and accept those?
Mr. Black, any comment?
Through your worship to Counselor Brooks Hill, the, the answer, I believe, is that there's a standard, pretty much standard sized containers that the equipment is designed to work with. I do agree that in the wintertime, likelihood of having yard waste to deal with is pretty low. However, that also could mean that we reduce the frequency of pickup of the compostable materials to every other week or even further if that's what the community demand is on the equipment and the storage facilities. So in other communities I'm aware of, the containers are typically 120, 150 liters for this. We can certainly look at smaller containers as part of the, the program. But I believe that for, to include the lawn and yard waste, it needs to be a larger container. And yes, do we need to pick up all the time? No. Could it be more seasonal as there is lots of yard waste in the summer versus the winter?
Hey, I'm in a council meeting.
Counselor Brooks Hill? So I, I, I don't agree with your logic on that. The garbage, if there's no compostable materials, no meat, no vegetable scraps, it's the garbage that you don't need to pick up. The compost needs to be picked up every week. Otherwise, people are going to have rancid meat rotting in their house, and then they're going to put it outside, it'll attract bears because they're not going to want the smell. And so having smaller containers, I just don't under, I don't, I don't understand the logic behind that. But, and why would you need a container for the yard waste? The yard waste can be put in paper bags the same way as it is now, or people could just take it to the dump themselves.
I mean, I know in Calgary, they have all the bins that are the same size, the garbage, the organic waste, and then the recycling.
Pretty easy.
Yeah, so one truck, it just pops it in. But if we decide that we go smaller bins, that's, that's a choice as well. So we can just carry on with the existing system, smaller bins, so they're not hurting their pack lifts and these things up anyway. And part of the discussion is, do we need to put meat into the compostables? And I say, if that's, that's the defining element that attracts bears, you know, the organic waste is not going to attract a bear, right? So those type of decisions or those should be evaluated.
Well, Mr. Black, he could correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe part of the logic is separating the organics from the refuse would lower our tipping fees. And I think if we put the meat in with the refuse, that would not qualify us.
Correct. Correct. And through, through your worship to Counselor Brooks Hill, again, in the, in the wintertime, when we would have lower temperatures also, so the, the meat waste would, would not go as foul as quickly as in the summertime. And again, that's when we would have most of the organic material going to the landfill. And so what I'm hopeful for is that we can certainly get every bit of organic material out of people's yards if they've got yard waste, if they got the meat, bones, leftovers from cooking. If all of that can go to the landfill, then that is what we would like to do in order to make our, our reach more towards our goals of reducing greenhouse gases also. As, as Counselor Elliott mentioned, also Vancouver's the same with, bigger cities have the same size. also Vancouver is the same with bigger cities have the same size containers for everything. And as a former resident of the the big city, we hardly ever took out the compost material in the wintertime. But in the summertime, it went out every week with lawn cuttings and garden waste. Again, same-sized containers for both.
Councilor Palmer, you had your hand up?
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Black. And just, so Maggie's going to also do a presentation as well in addition to this, or is that kind of the main part?
If 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 council, certainly Maggie's here at your at your desire. And if you have questions for Maggie, I know that she's ready to answer questions regarding the the bear smart.
Okay, that I just wanted to qualify before I started asking questions. And maybe probably more making comments than asking questions. So based on your presentation, we're looking at a pretty hefty increase in costs for waste management between the CSRD, increase of tipping fees, and increasing services within the municipality. So we need to go be aware of what we're doing here. There was, you were suggesting that, you know, based on what our council goes with the discussion here today, that you would be putting stuff together for the 2022 budget. The, I'll say that I think we really need to have a more robust discussion. I think it's good, a good starting point. Just a little bit of history, going back a couple decades ago, the province had a zero-waste mandate. I think it was 2020 that they said that we were going to be zero-waste in the province, and we barely moved ahead at all. A number of communities, in fact, most communities do have separated garbage where when it comes to Revelstoke, well, Revelstoke's in the Dark Ages when it comes to responsible waste management. And let's not pretend that we're somewhere else. You know, even extreme redneck communities in Alberta have separated garbage a long time ago. So it's it's well overdue. I want to make sure that we go above the right path in a rational way. A portion of this is about saving bears and, quite frankly, killing rats, if you wish, or stopping them from multiplying. And then we have an emerging raccoon problem that's going to be increasing quite a bit as well. So there's those aspects. I I I believe we can do, you know, get to a much better responsible waste management spot in in the fairly near term. I'm not sure how far along we'll get in 2022. Especially if we just sort of do add an ad hoc approach. These are just a whole bunch of comments. So you used the example of Canmore. Canmore is a good, good example of to learn from mistakes. There is other snow communities that we can learn about. We mentioned Whistler, Jasper and Banff have centralized organic systems that actually bears don't get into because they were designed partly, unlike the Canmore experience. And they have different models. We talked about the, Councilor Brooks Hill was talking about the bin sizes. And of course, like Kelowna's had the smaller bins for years and years now. OsoGrow goes, that goes back when they were doing their composting program that were just starting. That that's been in play for two or three decades, the OsoGrow product. So I'm looking forward to get to that point. There's no question in my mind that the organic waste, sorry for the scattered approach, but it's stuff that I think about, not really care about. But the, you know, the the organic waste, that this is the low-hanging fruit in stopping irresponsible dumping of, you know, good product into landfills. It's the worst thing that we could possibly be doing. As you mentioned, it's fifty percent, approximately fifty percent of what's going into the landfill. Get that out of there right away. That's fifty percent of the life. That's the major cause of leachate and smell and a whole bunch of things in the landfill. So like, it needs to happen, and I'm glad we're moving that way. How do we go about collecting that and ensuring that we collect as much as we possibly can in Revelstoke from the residential areas and the businesses? Is is how do we make this easy? How do we make this economically viable as well? We need to be cognizant of that. And so where do we find, look at the best, you know, the best practices? That kind of term is thrown around a lot. But where do we look at practices and what would work really, really well in Revelstoke? So those are just some of my introductory sort of comments. More discussion is needed before we step into saying, okay, well, we're going to do this kind of bin program or this kind of collection in the 2020 budget. I don't think this is sufficient. Couple of questions with that preamble. The, has this been referred to the Environmental Committee? And have they had a more robust discussion on this?
Mr. Black, can you comment?
Sir, your worship to Councilor Palmer. Yes, it has been brought forward to the EAC. Not in the detail of the report. The EAC was supportive of us furthering our environmental footprint or reducing our environmental footprint through collection of composting compostable materials and reducing greenhouse gas. And again, Maggie may want to chime in at this point, who is the chairperson for the EAC also. However, we are, the the group did have a discussion and support is and is supportive of this idea.
So, Ms. Pizari, you turn your camera on. Do you want to make comment?
Yeah, I can speak on behalf of the Environmental Committee. We did have a really great discussion around it. And in looking at the three options for the bin pickup, we kind of thought the Whistler model doesn't really fit for Revelstoke. However, the options of either having centralized bins or personalized door-to-door pickup bins that are bear-resistant would be ideal. And there's also, we talked about options of location-dependent, having those bins work based on the location. So if you think of houses in Arrow Heights, a lot of those houses have garages. So that may be better suited for a door-to-door pickup. Whereas if you look at in Southside, where the houses are much smaller, there's no place to store those bins. So maybe a centralized bin kind of solution for that. But at that time during that discussion, we didn't have Steve's report on costing or the garbage trucks or anything like that. But we'd be very happy to take it back to the group coming up for our next meeting.
All right. Thank you. I just, Councilor Palmer, have you finished?
I have more, but I'm quite happy.
Okay, so Councilor Ryan has her hand up. I'd like to go to her first. Councilor Ryan, if you could turn the camera on, please, and then you can ask your question.
Sorry, my Wi-Fi is not good enough for the camera, so I hope you just can. Okay, so I think for, like, the report was really great. It's so nice to see this come forward. Option two seems like a really great starting point. I think the idea of giving staff direction in where we're, kind of where our heads at. I mean, I agree that we need further discussion, but I think that they can't maybe decide what that looks like until we provide that direction. So for me, like, when I read that report, it seems that the sort of most reasonable option in terms of having good diversion rates as well as bear-proof effectiveness was option number two. And so I think it does make sense to be putting that in the budget as soon as possible because there are going to be, you know, obviously increases to our operating budget as well as capital costs that we should be budgeting for. So until we provide that direction, I think we're just kicking the can, haha, down the road. So I think we should be doing that, and so I'm all in support of option two.
Great. Thank you. Council Elliot?
Has there been any consideration to privatizing the organic waste from and using it productively?
Are you talking about going out to a company looking after things on behalf of the city?
I would say, yeah, just a private entity that collects and manages the organic waste of our community and remove it from the landfill. Is there a business?
We don't have a, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Black, we don't currently have a commercial business in Revelstoke that does that. However, there is one in Sanon Arm that serves the community of Sanon Arm. Any comment?
Sir, your worship to Councilor Elliot. Waste management is here in town that does most of the commercial for the the commercial industrial businesses in the community. We did not reach out to the the one private company here in town that does that work. With council's direction, we would be glad to inquire as to the viability and what those costs might look like and what that service might look like in return.
Maybe, maybe what I, are there examples in other communities that don't do it in-house? Are we destined to deal with the CSRD? Or is there an opportunity to pursue other?
Well, the CSRD operates the landfill and has the organic, they built the organic spot where things will go to. In in Sanon Arm, there's a company called Spa Hills that picks up. So they have their local garbage people pick up the organic stuff, take it to a spa, Spa Hills comes and takes it and deals with it. We're a little different situation here because CSRD has built a place for organics to go to. So now we have to decide as a community, do we want to do this in-house? Do we want to have another company look after the transportation? Whether that's be our local commercial transport company, which Mr. Black has just spoke about? Or do we want to do a centralized bin and look at that? So the question becomes, what's the appetite around the table? To give a little bit of guidance to staff so that they can maybe define what costs are and we can have a more robust discussion around the table as to where we think this should go.
I think it's long overdue. And we, a year and a half ago, we were talking about our compost facility. It's taken that long for the CSRD to get something, and we're destined to operate next spring. So that, to me, is an eternity in lost time. I'm just so frustrated that we're finally having this discussion. We've been talking about this two years ago. And it's now we're fleshing it out, and I'm saying, my gosh, what more do we need? We need an answer, and someone's got to provide it. Whether we put it to an expert to manage our waste or but we just can't keep doing what we're doing.
There is so many proposals. What is your proposal?
If the Environmental Committee can give us a recommendation or we put it to a waste management expert, it'll give us an answer. Because right now, we're just drying straws.
Councilor Palmer, then Councilor Shirlit.
Thank you, Mayor Sol. So just further to Councilor Ryan. So I'm supportive of staff putting this in the budget, recognizing that we haven't even had our first discussion on the 2022 budget. So by all means, we need to get moving on this. Please recognize, staff, please recognize that we're not going to have those bins in place January 1st or whatever it looks like. So it's probably a stage financial impact. I would like us to go back to the the Environmental Committee for fleshing it out a little bit more in more detail. I would like to see the Environmental Committee and all committees giving clear recommendations. Let's so making a resolution in your committees that give clear recommendations coming back to council so that we're not doing your work for you. And the, and then through to Maggie. You know, from my perspective, as far as bearware goes, that this is the opportunity for us to get this right so we can just get rid of the compost bear tractant out of the garbage and go like super aggressive on on that aspect, on enforcement, because it's a big issue in our community. So regardless of what we do, you know, once we create the opportunity for people to deal with this valuable commodity, a super valuable commodity, to not put it in the garbage anymore, and let's let's really look at that enforcement so that if a bear comes, rots a bin apart and it's got meat waste or whatever in it, then we go heavy on that so that there's a strong incentive to use our compost facility, whatever that's going to look like. So that's a big win for that. It's also going to help with our rat, raccoon problem. I would strongly encourage looking at some of the other communities, in particular Banff and Jasper, but also other communities, including what their financial model looks like. Because it seems to me that we should be able to, by taking this fifty percent waste out of the waste stream, fifty percent commodity, it's not a waste. It's just a waste that we put in the waste. That we should be starting to, you know, substantially reduce our costs. I expect over the coming years that our landfill is going to be extended life more and more and that our need for waste to be reduced, so that's going to be reducing. And I hope the CSRD is on board on how how to reduce that whole thing of this idea of garbage. And we're on, we have the poster child of plastic bags coming up hopefully soon. The the compost is the low-hanging fruit. But looking at those opportunities so that we are not putting compost in garbage from the bearware thing. And then there's the synergies of larger volumes. And then it just deals with all the, whether you put meat or dog waste or whatever into this. So that's what that's what I would like to see, a little bit more discussion and some more comparables. The other question I have, Mayor Sol, is on our environmental coordinator. So her responsibility was, I'm looking at her G H G reductions. So have we replaced, is that the position they've been replaced? Because she left this body. And so that's because that's a that's a missing piece that we had budgeted money for. Because I think when we have that replaced coordinator, that's an important component. So I'm not sure exactly where that's at. And that's probably something for more for senior management to be looking at that. Because that's a, there's a huge reduction that we can get with the greenhouse gases with the compost program. That's probably enough for me for now.
Okay, so Ms. Pizari, you have your hand up to respond to Councilor Palmer. I'll let you go, and then I will go to Councilor Ryan and then Councilor Shirlit.
Perfect. Yes, thank you, Mayor Sol. And so just Tim, in regards to what you had mentioned in regards to bearware. So on bearware side of things, their recommendation would be centralized bins. And that is because in speaking with the Conservation Officer Service throughout B C, in speaking with Parks Canada and other communities, the centralized bin system is the most effective when it comes to bear-resistant bins. And that's kind of throughout B C. And we also spoke with a lot of community members because there's a lot of talk just about what would work best. And they're mostly split. There's no preference on centralized versus at-home pickup. There's pros and cons to both. So I think either way, when it comes to the community and who we have spoken with and reached out to, which has been kind of a vast cross-section of the community, they're kind of fifty-fifty on it. So it's it's comes down to just education and people getting used to bear-resistant bins when it comes to that.
That's awesome. Thank you very much.
I have I have Councilor Ryan, Councilor Shirlit, and then we'll come to you. Okay, Councilor Ryan, comment?
Yeah, thanks. I was going to say that we should maybe refer it to bearware, but it sounds like their position is quite clear and that it would be the recommendation, as Maggie just outlined, for centralized bins. And I I'm wondering, like, where the conversation goes when we talk about development services and new developments and things like that? Because it almost seems like whatever approach we need is going Because it almost seems like whatever approach we need is going to be some kind of blended, like, you know, curbside pickup for most existing residents. But then in newer developments, of course, it would be built in that, you know, you need to have centralized garbage and that it needs to be bear proof and all that good stuff. So what does that look like? And I'm not really even sure like who this question is for, but I'm just curious, like, how do we make sure that that gets built into development plans?
Okay, comment, Mr. Simon?
To your worship and to all of council, generally speaking, you know, guidance through an overall solid waste management plan that would be directed at the city could then be embedded into policies in the OCP and the zoning bylaw. There are some minor steps that we've been taking in the short term because there is obviously discrepancies. So in the upcoming zoning bylaw update, you'll notice in the supplementary regulations section, there will be policies in there and guideline or regulations rather to require bear-proof bins for new commercial, industrial and multifamily residential development where the city is not responsible for collection services.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Simon. So I'm going to go to Counsel Charlotte and I'm just going to step up for a moment and then Counsel Rotelle will take my place.
Thank you, worship. So this kind of brings up the next, the topic that I was going to ask. First, I have a question for Maggie while before we go in. When you were talking about the split in community feedback where it was split between centralized bins and curbside pickup, I'm wondering if that feedback has been monitored by neighborhood and if there was any consistencies within different neighborhoods of which system would be preferable to the residents? If anything was coming out of that?
I don't know in regards to neighborhood. I can go back through the data and see what I can find out for you and also do another survey throughout that includes neighborhoods. If you would like, for sure, that's something we can do. But as of right now, I don't know in regards to neighborhoods.
Okay, fair enough. That's fine. Because this goes back to what the Environmental Committee was talking about when we discussed was that one solution is probably not going to fit. Where centralized bins make sense from a bearware's perspective and in some neighborhoods and areas of the community, like you were talking about in Southside, for instance, when there's more mobile home parks, when you're looking at higher density areas, the centralized bin makes more sense. Whereas in our residential neighborhoods, it makes more sense to go curbside pickup. My concern is that our centralized bin pickup right now is completely managed by Waste Management, if I understand correctly. So apartment buildings and, we would apartment buildings, commercial properties, some of the, like the higher density developments that have those centralized bins, but that is all done separately from the city. So essentially, right now, we do have a mix of community provided service and privately provided service. Is that correct? Yeah. So when we're looking at the business case and the budget for this is one thing that we've been hearing in the Chamber of Commerce is that the commercial fees for having garbage pickup done, there's the recycling conversation, which is a whole other story, but even just garbage pickup, from what I understand, has been going up dramatically. If this is something, as much as my colleague Counsel Elliott is talking about privatizing more, I'm wondering if privatizing less is also an option? Where if we take on more of that centralized bin pickup, if we decide that a mix of those services better serves our community, to find that mix of compliance and actual bear proofness, then does it make sense to onboard more service to hit that capacity of scale to make the business case make more sense?
Through the chair to Counsel Charlotte, absolutely. My understanding is that many of the vehicles now that are available to purchase include forks on the front to lift the larger bins, including the articulated arms to lift the bins and even vehicles with multiple containers on them so that you can pick up both the compostables and the refuse in one pass. All things that we would bring forward as consideration in order to make the system be robust, efficient and cost-effective to the community. As Maggie has indicated, some areas are going to be and are currently using a centralized bin. Can we move away from that? Unlikely. Are there places where we can blend the systems? I do not see an option other than having a blended system to accommodate all the different types of residential units in the city. And then as far as the multifamily and the larger facilities, they will all have centralized containers, recycling and bear-proofed enclosures also. And as Mr. Simon indicated, we will be able to then further define our OCP and policies so that we can make these things more robust and make it so that it's unavoidable to participate and ensure that we get where we need to go with saving the bears and reducing greenhouse gas.
Absolutely. Well, I think, worship, that's what I'm looking at is how do we make the right thing easy and the wrong thing hard? So if, I'm just looking at the options that were in the package of report where Counsel Ryan was talking about support for option number two. And I think where I'm going at is I'd rather see a combination of two and three. So the, I appreciate the clarification that the new truck would be able to serve both of those purposes. It would not require us to get a new truck for curbside and another new truck for the centralized bins. So I appreciate that. Now, is that the budget? When we're looking at the budgets in here, the proposed costs, I don't know if that's already part and parcel with that or if it's a separate, a slightly different calculation or not.
Can you comment, Mr. Black?
Yes, through your worship, through to Counsel Charlotte. This, this I hoped had, was to be something that was going to be a relatively simple exercise for staff to undertake. Obviously, this is not. This is a very, very challenging project to undertake. However, that does not mean that we can't get there. What are the low hanging fruit? I think we have to have some direction from council today that says, yeah, we want to pursue this. We want you to pursue options two and three in order to address the community's different, differing needs by location and by housing type. Further refine the costs in order to understand what the system would look like and return to you with consideration of other communities as Counselor Palmer has indicated for Banff and Jasper, looking at the blended system and taking this to the EAC for further review and refinement and a recommendation to come back to council. The existing system as described costs roughly $10 a month. With the automated arm, we're looking at the, in the range of $15 to $16 a month to go to a blended system. Let's make some assumptions of $20 to $25 a month. Obviously, we need to come back to you with some direction on where this is going and we'd be glad to do that and to take away all this information and return to you in the, in the new year or hopefully maybe even in the next, next month, month or so, to further get direction from council and apply for a grant that maybe we can make this happen sooner than later with lesser cost to the community.
Okay, Counsel Palmer and then Counsel Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor Sol. So first a question through to planning, to Mr. Simon, further to Counsel Ryan's comments about preparing for this in developments. So I'll use a specific example of affordable housing on Downey Street, 420 Downey Street. Counsel will be talking about that. So the question I have is, with that particular one, so there's a comprehensive development zone being proposed, I have some questions about that, we'll save that for later. Could we, under the current framework, require a development like that to make provision for a separate and distinct composting collection? Because that would be a classic kind of neighborhood where that synergy for compost bin would make sense. So would, do we have those tools today to actually require that?
Mr. Simon?
Through your worship to Counselor Palmer, to the best of my knowledge, we don't have anything that would be specifically embedded in any of our bylaws to obligate them to do that. It's most definitely a conversation that can be had with proponents and development services staff do routinely have that conversation for more major development projects. But this is part of the reason why updating policies, guidelines is going to be needed to implement this in a comprehensive manner.
So, Mayor Sol, so that's, that's clear that, you know, this is important for council. So having that dialogue, maybe push it up on your list of when you're having those developer conversations. And then also looking at, you know, as this conversation moves ahead, what are the appropriate tools that may be, that we should be implementing? And that might be in conjunction with corporate services. So going on to just sort of the high level, I think we've talked about some of these, but I just want to summarize them in my mind anyway. So getting some more better, maybe better comparisons of what we're looking at this. So looking at maybe a little bit more detail on the pros and cons, because we're kind of juggling this pros and cons and maybe even better the SWOT strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. So we get a better clarity. And the reason why I say that is from, you know, I absolutely respect and understand Counsel Charlotte's comments about a two system, but I'm still thinking maybe a one system makes more sense for consistency. But I think we need to know those, that framework a little bit better. I think that the discussion of private versus public, that's for later. Let's not get caught in the trap, whether it should be public or private until, otherwise we're going to go down a labor relations thing. Let's just, let's not, let's not hold that up. Important, I recognize, but let's make sure we get this done. And again, going back to the Environmental Advisory Committee for clear recommendations, they'll need some more of that information, you know, that's coming forward. So that's my thoughts. Thank you, Mayor Sol.
Great. Counsel Elliott?
So my understanding is that no matter what comes out of this, the cost of waste removal is going up from $80 to $160 a ton.
Yeah, that'll be the tipping fees.
Yeah. So the tipping fees are going up regardless. So the cost is going to escalate in the next year.
Yep.
Period. So that's going to be a reality for all of our taxes. It's going to affect our taxes. So one way or another, we're going to have to deal with whatever. So that's a given. And then the other thing is the bearware's got their preference on the way it should be handled. Has that been referred to the environmental? Because they've got two different, this is, so what you, you talked about Tim, is that they need to be unified in their, what we enacted as counselors or city representatives, but we have to get some feedback or the right information has to come to us. So if the bearware has got their recommendations, get it to the environmental committee. Committee gives a recommendation to us and we can, we can, we can make a decision on that. That to me sounds like a clear path.
Counsel Charlotte, do you sit on one of those committees? Do you want to make comment?
I do. And Meg Basiri, who is the bearware coordinator, she's the chair of the environmental committee. And she always brings the bearware perspective to our conversations. So that was part and parcel of the recommendation that had come. There are two current concerns that I'm curious as to what clarity are we looking for? Can we ask the environmental committee a more clear question? Because recommendations that have come so far that were already explained to us, one was a caution of rent for, the most bear safe practice is the centralized bins. The other concern at the environmental committee conversation was around certain neighborhoods, especially with low income neighborhoods that do not have a place to put a bin outside of access to wildlife. So this is where the individual bins, if they still need to be stored away from the access, away from wildlife access, that is currently a problem and will continue to be a problem when you live in a mobile home park and you just don't have the space. So that's where looking at, as much as the curbside bins or the curbside pickup might have, as per the report, better uptake because it's easier for the average citizen that has a single family home to be able to wheel their own private bin to the end of the driveway rather than walk to centralized bins. That doesn't work in every neighborhood. They're different. So the question I'm wondering from council is to go to the environmental committee, what kinds of recommendations do you want back? Because there's, there's the emissions conversation, there's the bear safety conversation, there's the equitable and inclusivity conversation, all of which I think have started to be answered, but I don't know that that's being heard. So beyond talking about budgets, which I think belongs at this table, not the environmental committee, what questions are we asking? What guidance do we want beyond what we've already got?
Does the environmental committee want centralized bins?
Yes.
Is that their number one recommendation?
That was the gist of the conversation. We had no budget. We did not have any budget numbers. This was reported.
So that's all I need to know from the environmental committee.
Right.
What do you prefer?
And that was already presented.
Okay. So let's, we can enact that. We can, we can debate it, cost, when we get to the actual numbers. And then has the environmental committee considered privatization?
Well, no.
No, no one about some sort of. So, so the conversation should come up and say, are there examples of communities that do it through privatization? If you're saying the city can do it better than a private industry, I would debate that.
I'm asking. I'm not saying that we can. I'm asking if right now it's split, we're a small community, there's only so much garbage collection that needs to be done between residential and commercial and commercial is a big part of it. If parts of our residential should be collected in the same manner as commercial, then rolling all of that service into one provider that is operated at a break even, not-for-profit system like the city runs, where we charge a fee for service to cover our costs, we're not looking to make profits like Waste Management is looking to do. Right? So for the community, does that make more sense? And if we're trying to cover the overhead of buying a large truck and divide that per resident, would it make more sense to add more people to the pool that are using that truck, in which case including commercial and taking on some of the services that are currently privatized? That's why I was bringing that up as a potential idea to explore.
So when we get what we want, centralized bins, and then we have the option, the product of those bins is this organic waste that's valuable, as Tim pointed out, that is valuable. A private entity would utilize that and maybe that's beneficial to our community. I mean, I just think that those options are out there and we haven't explored.
And at this point in time, we need to hear from the CSRD as to how they are going to process the organic waste.
Yeah.
And they may be having plans to process that and sell it, which may offset some of our fees. So those are questions that we have for them. So Ms. Basiri, you had your camera on. You have your hand up. Do you want to make comment?
Yeah, just to Counsel Elliot, to answer that question, I spoke with Graham over at the CSRD and last time I spoke with them, it was their, it was my understanding that they were going to provide the compost, the like organic matter back to the community after it had been composted so that it's not just going to sit there at the landfill, it will be available back to the community to utilize. But I won't speak on behalf of them. That was just based on the last conversation that I had. That was my understanding.
Great. Appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Basiri. So any other comments from councilors? So at this point in time, Counsel breaks up.
Just in terms of direction for Mr. Black, I, I'm not sure if you're going to get a clear direction from council today, but my preference would be option two or three or a blend between two and three. But obviously not sticking with the status quo or just with option one.
Okay. Appreciate that. And so for me, I'm of that, that mind at this point in time too, for you to give us some ideas price-wise, what's going to be practical. I look at things in my neighborhood, for example, I still have seniors who are in their single family home that are 80-plus and having some sort of benefit to curbside for them would be advantageous. Going to a centralized bin isn't going to happen because they're not going to drag it down the street to a bin and. it down the street to a bin, and they're not going to be able to get it into their vehicles, if they have vehicles to do that. So I'd like to see both ways. But Councilor Palmer had his hand up, and Councilor Ryan has her hand up. So I'll go to Councilor Palmer and give some last input, and then we can leave this matter go for today.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Solz. So just, I think I already sort of summarized my major points. Going to the environmental committee, so I'm not taking a position on the option. I want to really want to hear how, let's utilize resources from the environmental committee and let them really chew through this stuff. But the analytics, I need, I need to know that they've looked at the analytics. Budget is a factor, so looking at saying, okay, affordability, how does that come in? The delivery of service, I don't believe belongs there. That's just going to get into this private versus public. I'd love to go there right now, but we'll be here for another hour, right now, probably closer to you than possible. Greenhouse gases is a factor, the bear, bear stuff, rats and raccoons is the stuff. What's going to work here in Revelstoke in our winters? So we have to be very careful about how we look at other communities, learn from them. But remember, we have our winters. And I think that's, yeah, the main thing. So I really do look forward to the committee sort of diving into this a little bit deeper. And I guess the other thing, Mayor Solz, is if we need some additional resources, I'm talking someone that has expertise, has done this kind of work, I'm certainly open to entertaining that, because we've got a lot of well-intentioned people here. Our whole community is well-intentioned, but maybe we need a little bit more guidance rather than shooting from the hip and back. Those are my comments.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Palmer. Councilor Ryan?
Hi. I was wondering if other councillors would be interested in making a recommendation or a motion to, like a commitment to becoming Bear Smart in within a, within a certain, it doesn't have to be a really rigid timeline, because obviously we, we don't know, you know, when the truck is going to be exactly up for renewal and stuff like that, but at least it gives direction, some staff, or staff some direction about our commitment and our priorities. Is anybody else on board with that?
Councilor Palmer?
So through to Councilor Ryan, I would, I would be supportive of that. I think what I would really like to, before we make a resolution, I would like another presentation specifically from Bear Smart, so Maggie, on what that looks, what that commitment would be. And Reni Kratz now is really timely, because if we get to deal with this organic issue, I think that's a part of getting towards that Bear Smart community. So I, so I, that's where I would like to see Maggie and Bear Smart coming and saying, okay, well, what does that look like? And then we can make a more informed decision or direction. And then just one thing, unlike what you were saying though, is a very specific hard deadline if we make that commitment.
You like that or you don't like that?
Yeah, I like that. You didn't want a hard deadline. I want a hard deadline.
Sure.
That's later.
Well, maybe then we'll make that motion once we get the presentation, and I don't want to speak on behalf of Bearware, but I know that they're always keen to get engaged and they have so much information, so they're, they're, I don't know, I could see Maggie like nodding, because I just know that she's definitely going to provide an awesome presentation, and then maybe at that next meeting or committee, the whole meeting, we can make that motion to commit to being Bear Smart or becoming Bear Smart.
Great. Gary, thank you all. I'm going to draw this conversation to a close. Mr. Black, have you got direction that you feel you can work with? You're muted.
Thank you, Mayor Council, for this robust discussion. It really helped us focus where we need to go. I believe that we sort of hit between the lines of where we need to go, not quite on target, but I think we're relatively close looking at a blended system here that will make sense. We will do further research and come back to council with further, or another report, providing some higher level of detail on where we're going and consideration of budget, what taxation potentially could look like, and opportunities and constraints in order to achieve the goal and council's priorities of, one, becoming a Bear Smart community, reducing greenhouse gases, and let's figure out how we can get all of that compost out of our garbage and make it into something usable for the community in our future. Thank you very much for your time today.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Black. Thank you, councillor, council. Ms. Russo, just for the record, please note that CAO, Mr. Thackeray, is now present in the room.
Noted.
Welcome, James. Thank you for getting here safely. Appreciate that.
Could we take a short break?
Yes, absolutely. At this point, cameras will stay on, we will not mute anything, so we're transparent. The council, if you need to use washroom, take a break. I don't know.
James, on the highway. Oh, trail. Yeah, go to Radiant first.
Yeah, it took me three hours, three and a half hours to get from Banff to Radiant. Sorry? That's a long walk. Oh, well, they just, the ice had compacted, and so the trucks were going at about thirty K, twenty-five K, because they're, they're these big, chunks of ice. Yeah. Yeah, that was a long day.
And what about gold? All right, no, you didn't go through, put it with the highway from there. Uh, here, Rogers Passes.
Yes, good, some spots. I probably, I didn't make probably more than. Past. Well, I sent a note to Jen at Radiant. Yeah, I probably didn't get past ninety K.
Long ride.
Well, there's so many trucks, and they're all, they're all jammed together, because they're all chaining up and chaining off, so it could get to a, it's not going to pass in ninety K. Like, for a stolen. Yeah, I was watching this guy trying to pass it. Well, maybe I was hearing say.
Yeah, I think we all have such chaos in the highway.
Well, the number of tractor trailers still, it's a small thing, just like, there's a comfort of, still, which.
You're really great, but my husband drives, he's got his class one, driving shuttle for everything Revelstoke for a while, for a long time, and just seeing people, yeah, trying to pass, do silly things, and truck drivers that were not well experienced in mountains. So when they changed the training regulations for truck drivers, I think just recently now, there's different regulations and requirements, because they do come up, a sow is driving truck, get to Vancouver, and go, yeah, sure, I can take something on my calorie to split that far, and start driving through these passes in the winter and have no idea, like, it was on Highway Rescue, and I'm sure you've seen it, where people would have a truck accident on the highway, and they're in shorts and flip-flops, like, they're not well-prepared for mountains at all.
Or do they have the proper trail monitoring?
Like, they just, they don't know how to put chains on their truck, and they're driving through the mountains with no, like, they've got their class one. So changing those regulations and putting this, like, if you're going to drive a cliff this big through the mountains in the winter, there are consequences to that. So, yeah, it's a ongoing challenge. It's really quite mind-boggling sometimes. But yeah, let's hear your opinion.
That was interesting. I didn't go.
It's an experience everyone should have, especially the people in other cities that are dictating highway policy, transportation. I've never actually driven these mountains in the winter, it looks nice, it's not that far up.
So officially, we're a bearware committee, not a bear smart committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, we know we're a bear.
But I thought we were, if we saw a possible bear, bear, bear item, was any sort of ignition that we were.
Oh, yeah.
So Bear Smart, do you form that or?
Yeah, Bear Smart means that we've enacted some, we've also put our refuse into Bear Smart consumers, so we're trying to outsmart them.
So the Bear Smart, that not only into the environment, we are so, just trying to have a conversation with Bear Smart, we should talk about the environment. We're not having a full.
What's all part of the process?
I know, I said it as a priority.
Not fair, we said it as a priority.
Yeah, I say, well, first thing, vision or whatever it is, we're here to stand up. So why, why is the part, so now, yeah, so that should be, that should dictate everything. If this is the, this is the premise that we're operating around, and it's Bear Smart, it's absolutely play into it, it'd be natural. And I'm saying, why are we having a conversation with Bear Smart, and it should be, environmental sustainability, it's what we need to grow.
Just say you have your work on and.
Oh, fair. That's why we have the innovation part.
But I don't, I don't know why it's frustrating, but it's also, you're probably doing so many things a day, right? Like, we're actually going to get anything done, it's not just starting all these things. We should do all this, great, but they all take work. So let's pick and choose and get some things accomplished and finished, so we can move on and get the other stuff done, rather than having, having everything started.
I would say just put a common, right now, if we're talking compost, why don't we just put a trial and put a common bin, and let everyone fill it, and they want it. Have a trial.
The compost system, what not yet.
Well, you're going to say Johnson Heights, they put a bin up there, but then evaluate what went wrong, basically.
People, I'm sorry, I just, no, I can tell you, you compare it to Kenmore. Kenmore has a large appliances waste pickup, two or three times a year. And I say, so if you don't do that, you put a bin, a common bin, they're going to dump everything there, so you need to think about the whole picture. How do I, how do I fix it? So, you're going to, you're going to plug Kenmore, it's a complete picture, and line it up, so it makes sense.
All right, council, appreciating your enthusiasm with waste, but I'd like to move on. So item nine B, Development Service Housing Needs Report, so Mr. Simon, I'll turn it over to you and Mr. Thompson, if you don't mind, and let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. So I just wanted to introduce Matt Thompson. He is a community housing lead with Urban Matters, and he is here, he's been working with Director Wade, and they were very keen to present to committee the, the initial findings from the Phase One Housing Action Plan Report, which is kind of looking at baseline data. So I will request that Mr. Thompson be given permission to share his screens, that he can go through the presentation with you guys. And I would just kindly request, Mr. Thompson, that once you are done your presentation to, please, please return the screen permissions to Jaleen.
Absolutely. All right, I will share as soon as I'm able to.
You're the host, Mr. Thompson, so thank you.
Thank you very much, your, your worship and council. Can you see the presentation now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, yeah, thank you very much for your time this afternoon. Really appreciate being able to come and present this first update to, to the work that's been undertaken on the Housing Action Plan. We're in the process of finalizing a baseline report that will be the foundation for, for work moving forward, including engagement and policy testing. So this presentation is really intended to give council an update on some of that information, some of which you will be familiar with, and some of which is, is intended to be new information. So I will do a little, in terms of the, the overview of what's going to be contained in the report, there is an introduction and a bit of background on some of the baseline data council is, is familiar with already. The Housing Needs Report that was developed by Dillon Consulting in 2018, as well as a series of projections developed by Rennie Consulting, I believe in 2019. So those two, those two reports form the foundation of a lot of the, the housing targets that we've been working on developing through the first phase of this project. So I'll walk council through some of that existing data, and then also some of the new data that was not available back in 2018, 19, that we've used to kind of get a little more granularity and detail on some of the housing needs, particularly by tenure in Revelstoke. And then how we've used those to set some, some preliminary or draft housing targets, and then I'll talk about next steps for the project. So, you know, in terms of the, the background of the purpose for this report, this report is really intended to, to review and summarize some of the key baseline sources of information that are already present within the community, that is, the good work that's already been undertaken. But it's also intended to collect and analyze some, some new data in order to support setting some housing targets across the housing continuum for the city, to really understand, you know, what, what tiers of affordability and what types of tenure the city should be aiming to develop over the next, or develop in partnership with, with the nonprofit sector and private developers over the next ten to twenty years, in order to accommodate growth and address affordability issues within the community. And I will stress that for the Housing Action Plan, I mean, we are, we're, we have done our best to align the growth projections alongside of the official community plan update. So there is collaboration happening across teams there. And, and I want to assure council that those, those targets are being communicated, but the primary focus of the Housing Action Plan is really on the affordable component of housing needs within Revelstoke, because, because overall growth is being discussed and accommodated and planned for through the OCP. And so the Housing Action Plan, while not exclusively focused on affordable issues, is really foregrounding that with the understanding that that's a primary concern for council and the residents in the community. And then, of course, we are reviewing and aligning, my colleague Nancy will be presenting next, the GIS analysis that the city is undertaking to determine, you know, what feasibility is to meet some of these targets. I do also want to stress that the targets that are presented today are still in draft form, and we will be taking them back to the community for, for some ground truthing through the next, the next planned phase of engagement. And obviously, the first step of that is, is to hear council's comments on these targets today. So this is, this is some, just some information that council is likely already familiar with from the 2018 report, developed by Dillon Consulting in partnership with city staff. Really highlighted, you know, significant rise in home values since 2006, a high expenditure of all households spending over thirty percent of their pre-tax income on shelter costs, so, so experiencing some, some form of affordability issue, whether you're a renter or you're an owner. That there is, you know, a bit of an overtime trend in the last ten years, moving from homeownership towards more renters. And that, you know, as of 2016, the rental, or the housing stock in Revelstoke was still primarily made up of, of single detached dwellings and, and mobile dwellings, but with some small apartments and townhouse dwellings as well. And based on that report, the findings were initially that Revelstoke needs approximately two-hundred-eight more subsidized rental units and two-hundred-and-sixty, two-hundred-and-sixteen market rental units to meet demand. So those are some of the numbers that we, we've attempted to update with a little bit more nuance as I move through this presentation. The other really important piece of baseline information is the, is the document that was developed by Rennie Consulting that looks at forecasting population and household growth out to 2041, including the city's shadow population, as well as the, the city's visitor and tourist population. And so that, that report, as I'm sure council is aware, said that as of 2019, the, the population would be about seventeen thousand five hundred people, and now currently is estimated to be about nineteen thousand six hundred people, growing to, to nearly twenty-two thousand by 2041. That's the high-growth scenario, and, and that is the scenario that's being used by the OCP, as well as to help set the, the Housing Action Plan targets. That, that population growth means that there will be over eight hundred new units needed, about six hundred and eighty ground-oriented and about a hundred and eighty-six apartment units to accommodate that growth, and that owner occupancy rates are expected to increase over the next roughly twelve-year, year period. And that's, you know, that's based on historical, long-term historical trends, but also is sort of factoring in the, basically the work done by Rennie Consulting through the, through the household growth scenarios. So I'm going to present now just a little bit of data that may be new to So I'm going to present now just a little bit of data that may be new to counsel because it was released after the 2018 report as part of the province's custom package to support municipalities doing housing needs report. And it provides just a little bit more granularity on income and, and core housing need for residents and households in, in Rebelstoke. And so these next couple of slides really show the number of, the number of households by income group for both owners and renters. And so what this is, this is telling us, the 2016 figures are based on StatsCan, the 2016 census, the data that was released as part of the, the custom package. And then what we've done is we've essentially, you know, used the same proportions and updated based on the household figures provided by Rennie to see what that growth looks like. And, and really the primary thing that this, this slide tells us is that owners tend to cluster towards the higher end of the income continuum, which is not surprising. If you can afford to own, typically you would. And so the, you know, a large number of owners are, you know, over, earning over $100,000 or more. By contrast, renters tend to cluster towards the lower end of the income continuum. So we see that the majority of them are earning $40,000 or less and that the large majority of them are earning less than $60,000. There are still some higher income renters who choose to rent and that, you know, can be for a variety of factors. But I think the, the core story here is that rental housing is probably, you know, most vital for this group that's earning under $40,000 and to a, to a certain extent, also just under $60,000. Because that may be the stock that is either harder to find or missing in the community. And Rebelstoke's not unique in that because a lot of our, a lot of our primary or purpose-built rental stock is older. It may be, it may be less expensive, but it also may not be as available. Vacancy rates may be low. And so the more expensive housing that's available through the secondary market, that is secondary suites or private homes being rented out, may be more expensive. Another, another new slide that's based on the custom package provided by the province is a breakout of owners and renters in core housing need. And this, this is an important metric to understand. So the Dillon Report talks about the, the proportion and number of households who are experiencing affordability issues. This factors in several other indicators that are used by StatsCan and CMHC, which includes overcrowding and maintenance issues. And so when, when StatsCan looks at core housing need, essentially what they're looking at is, is, is your household paying more than 30% of its income towards housing costs? Or do you have significant maintenance issues in your unit? Or are you having overcrowding issues? Do you not have enough bedrooms for the number of members of your household? And if you, the answer is yes to any of those questions and you cannot, based on your income reasonably afford an alternative, you would be considered to be in core housing need. And so this data shows us that there, that there are about 195 household, or sorry, 115 households in core housing need who are owners and about 295 households in core housing need who are renters as of 2016. So again, we've used, we've used some of the Rennie data to update these numbers for 2021 and project them out to 10 years and 20 years in the future to show some different scenarios, which I'll talk about in a moment. But I also want to talk about some affordability, affordability measures. So this, this slide shows BC Housing's housing income limits, which is one of the primary measures for, for determining non-market or below market rents in the province. These figures are specific to Rebelstoke and are around the figures that were, or the, the rent levels that we'll be seeing for, for many of the new BC housing developments coming online, although they are also achieving rents that are lower than this. I see my colleague Cheryl Peters is also waiting to present. And so, you know, I won't, won't elaborate on this too much, but there are several affordability tiers built into most of the, the proposed or conceptual projects that BC Housing has in, in Rebelstoke right now that come in either below or near the housing income limits, as well as some units that are coming in closer to market level. So all of this tells us that, and, and I'll just, if you'll excuse me, I'll just flip back to this slide here. All this tells us that probably those households that are going to experience the greatest crunch in Rebelstoke are the ones who are earning the least. Because even some of the non-market rents may not achieve the depth of affordability that they need. So those are typically households that may be on income assistance, receiving that $375 a month or on disability assistance who are earning slightly more than that for their shelter, shelter allowance, but, but not considerably more. I will also note that there is very, very little in the way of purpose-built rental market data in, in Rebelstoke because of the, the sample size. And so CMHC does not release the data. So we rely on BC Housing typically to kind of get, help us gauge the market of where purpose-built rental may be. And it's my understanding that the housing income limits are derived from, from, from their own market analysis based on CMHC data provided to them. Also wanting to capture, of course, the important dimension of homelessness, which is not always captured through the census. Many of these households may, may be missed or individuals may be not counted through the census. And so we did talk to Community Connections to, to try to get a, develop a better picture. And really what we've seen is a lot of pressure through 2019 and early 2020, a lot of pressure on the homeless serving system in Rebelstoke with not much in the way of subsidies. Typically, Community Connections was serving between three and eight individuals a month, usually through some form of rent subsidy or hotel support. In late 2020, as part of, you know, COVID, COVID responses, BC Housing did augment the supports that were, were available through Community Connections through a variety of programs, which allowed Community Connections to expand their programming through late 2020 and 2021 to now be serving between 21 and 36 individuals at any given time. These, these figures are provided directly by them. And in, in talking to them, we learned that, you know, in 2019, 2020, there was always a waitlist and never enough subsidies. For now, it seems as though the number of subsidies that are available are typically serving the need without a long waitlist or a lot of additional external pressure on the system. So for the moment, there has been a, been a bit of an equilibrium achieved in the, the homeless serving resources alongside of the actual need in the community. So we use this data to essentially draft some housing targets, which provide us a, a sense of, you know, where the community may be going and what it can do through a Housing Action Plan to achieve progress or to make a difference in a significant dent in, in the, you know, the, the core housing need that we're seeing for both owners and renters in the community. So we do this by, by using the, the high growth scenario from the Ready Report as kind of our baseline information, just to align with the OCP. And then we use core housing need as primary measure of affordability. So we, we look to the future and we say, in, you know, across scenarios, how might core housing need change in the future? And, you know, what impact are local government investments and policy changes and senior government investments and policy changes going to have over the next five to 10 years? And so, so from this, we've arrived three scenarios. One is a high growth scenario. This is one that we call the dynamic scenario because it essentially says, what will happen if, if core housing need continues to grow in the way that we've seen it grow over the last 10 to 15 years? Realistically, this is probably, yeah, not a very realistic scenario in that once core housing need kind of hits a ceiling or achieves a, a high point, people tend to leave the community rather than staying and experiencing housing pressure. So, you know, looking at, at Rebelstoke's core housing need for renters right now, it's quite comparable with some other resort communities, including Whistler and, and Tofino. So, you know, we, that, that threshold sits somewhere around 30 to 35% of renters experiencing core housing need. And that's quite high, but it's not unique to Rebelstoke for sure. The, the next scenario is the moderate growth scenario. And that's basically asking, what happens if core housing stays the same or core housing need stays the same, but the population and households continue to grow? And that's more of a modest growth scenario. And then the third scenario, which is, I think, the one that we would seek to, to lay out a roadmap to achieve through the Housing Action Plan is what happens if through counsel and staff's work and partnerships with, with the private sector, the nonprofit sector and senior government, the city is actually able to achieve a reduction in core housing need. And so this anticipates government investment, local government policy and partnerships. But at the same time, we think it's achievable, depending on the direction that the city chooses to go. So just one more, one more table as a reminder of what, what our projections look like. So these are the Rennie projections. We are using the high growth scenarios on the right that assume about, or use, have about 3,500 households according to the projections as of 2016. And I will note, those projections or those, those figures are probably a little bit higher than what you see in the census because the census is generally recognized as a bit of an undercount. And so we've adjusted, you know, our own projections aligned to this to be, to be upward a little bit. And so, you know, that grows from 3,646 households in 2019 to nearly 44 households by 2031 and well over 48 households by, by 2041. So those are the figures that we're using for kind of our baseline household projections. And then what we do is we apply those three scenarios to them that I described before. So this, this first slide is for owners. And shows, the high scenario shows what would happen if core housing need amongst renters continued to increase at the rate that we saw it increase between 2006 and, and 2016. So again, not necessarily a realistic depiction, but just, you know, a sort of a what-if scenario. And there we're looking at about 216 owners in core housing need by 2031 and over 300 by 2041. The middle scenario looks at a sort of status quo, same rate of core housing need, but increasing number of households, which gets us to just under 160 households in core housing need who are owners by 2031. And then the third scenario, which is the low one, assumes government intervention and the developments of an effective Housing Action Plan for the next 10 years. And there we actually see a drop from 135 owner households in core housing need in 2021 to 99 by 2031. So that assumes that units are being built both to accommodate the growth of new households that would be in core housing need, as well as accommodating existing, some of the existing or latent demand for owner households in, in core housing need. And so we don't, you know, we don't assume anything after 20, 2031. Any, any Housing Action Plan probably has an outside window of about 10 years. And so we're not necessarily projecting in a deep way after that because obviously economic context can change, housing context can change. So that's kind of the, the, the sort of window of time that we're looking at with these. But it looks at, you know, accomplishing, you know, a fair amount amongst, amongst ownership. And then the real change or the real impact also comes from renters and what the, what the city can do if it dedicates some resources and works with, with key partners. So for this scenario, when we're looking at renters, we're looking at a, you know, a pretty big jump, both because, well, primarily because renters are in much greater core housing need than owners are. So while about, while about 10% of owners are in core housing need, over 30% of renters are in core housing need. So if that, you know, rate of core housing need continues to grow, we would see a pretty significant skyrocketing. Again, not suggesting that that's necessarily a realistic scenario. It's more of a what-if. But certainly the, the baseline growth, the middle growth scenario shows an increase from 367 renter households in core housing need by 2021. Oh, it's a 481 by 2041. And then finally, we have the third scenario, which looks at a reduction. And this, again, this reduction is looking at integrating existing and latent demands. So households that are right now in core housing need, as well as new households that might be in core housing need. And so all of that takes us to our draft set of targets. These targets are broken out by market and non-market for the next 10 years and then combined for 2031. As I've said, the, the primary window for this, this action plan would be the next 10 years. And so what we see is that there, you know, there's, there's a need for about 211 market rental and 171 non-market rental over the course of the next 10 years. I do want to note that there is, currently, there are currently a number of BC housing projects that are, that are underway. Currently, there are 193 proposed new units from BC Housing, which would be a mix of market and non-market units or near market and non-market units, as well as 117 units of existing rental that are currently being renovated at the Rivers Edge and Columbia Gardens Development. So both of those are being factored into the way that we do this analysis. But we're, you know, I know, I understand BC Housing is still finalizing its affordability levels. So we're waiting to see where those land before we understand how, how those units fit into either the market, market target or the non-market target component of this work. So the other thing I should note is that it's my understanding, there's been little in the way of purpose-built rental developments over the last five to six years. And so these, these targets for both market and non-market were to integrate some of the pent-up demand, that latent demand that's present in the marketplace for new, for new rental housing. So it's not just based on new renters as projected in the Rennie Report, but actually based on, on kind of the low vacancy rates and the increasing or skyrocketing cost of rental that's been built up in, in the market. And so really wanting to accommodate that last five years of growth in these targets as well. While the owner, the owner targets don't include that latent demand because there's a much smaller non-market component and the city has been building kind of market, market housing over the last number of years. So I, I know this is a lot to take in. This is like a bit of a fire hose of information. So I apologize for that. And of course, I'm happy to take questions, but before I do, just, just a quick slide on our next steps, which is that we are working to, to kind of align this work with the GIS land inventory that Nancy will be presenting on next. We're in the process of conducting a, a policy inventory to kind of develop a long list of potential actions that can be undertaken by the city and then working to prioritize those. And part of that prioritization will happen through, through the engagement that's our, our next planned phase of the work, where we'll be undertaking a, a survey with the Chamber of Commerce to better understand workforce housing. We'll be engaging with housing and service providers, as well as the development and building community. And, and of course, integrating with the existing and ongoing engagement around the OCP. So I will stop my share there and ensure that I am handing my hosting powers back over. Should they go to Jaleen?
Right. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Appreciate the input. Wow, you're right. It, lots of information to take in, lots of valuable information. And for us to actually see numbers on what we require and not is kind of off the charts what we bought right at the moment, but good to see, see this report coming forward. Counsel, any comments or questions? Counselor Shalala.
Oh, processing so much information. I really appreciate how you've spread out some of that information. One thing I'm curious about in subsequent reports perhaps, but whether or not when we look at the percentages of renters and owners in core housing needs, we're looking at the levels of income and how those incomes spread out. One thing I've always found really interesting was the spread of incomes in Rebelstoke, just as the general population. So looking at, yes, this is a percentage of the people in core housing needs, but how is, how to visualize that as percentages of our community? Because when you look at that mid-range of income, if I remember correctly, like we have, I don't know how many people live in that zone or that income level. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Because I know, I'm just thinking of our workforce housing, our frontline service staff typically make the lower end of that income. And so there's quite a few of them. So to really understand that picture of who's not, not just who's struggling, but who's doing well? And in what income brackets are they doing well? Just to have that perspective when we're looking at some of these questions.
Yeah, I think one of the things that, sorry, if I may, through the mayor, one of the things that we would typically do in the Housing Action Plan and, and we've laid out in the draft baseline report that's still with staff is we've tied, we've tied the incomes to what is affordable. So that you, that's very clear and we, we'd like to visualize it in sort of a graphical form. So that it's clear what, you know, what rent levels each income group can achieve, whether you're owner or renter. You know, what can you afford for a mortgage and your insurance on a monthly basis? What should you be paying? So that, so that it becomes easier to visualize right across the income continuum, where you might sit in relation to the housing continuum, right? Do you need sort of more strongly subsidized or deeply subsidized housing? Are you earning, you know, just enough that you might, might be able to squeak in to the market, but you'd be paying 40% of your income? And so I think, you know, through later iterations, this was quite a data-heavy report because we just wanted to get the baseline and the evidence down. But certainly, I think in the final housing action plan and and I think even hopefully in a draft format through some of the engagement. We'd like to visualize some of these things a little bit more strongly.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much. Because I see this, we've been talking a lot, your worship around the council table, it's like, what are the K P I's, if you will, like the key performance indicators that. We can keep an eye on and update as we go forward. And I'm also mindful of how much work it takes to update this stuff in a community that's changing so dramatically and so quick. Where if the core housing need is something that is being monitored by other groups, and this is an important thing for us to look at, and if we set some goals around that. Is how can we update those numbers on a regular basis so that we can check in as counsel? On a regular basis without a ton of work to see how we're doing on that. So that if the reports are set up in such a way that they can be updated more automatically without a lot of labor intensive consulting work. In the future, because this is going to be one of our big moving targets over the next decade.
Absolutely. And so, Mr. Thompson, any comment on what Counselor Shalit is just stating?
Well, yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Core housing need is a it's an indicator that's only updated every five years as it's available through the census. So we would anticipate seeing. Some of the preliminary data around core housing need coming out and being available by fall of next year. But for the level of detail, Statscan doesn't typically provide. A breakout of it by tenure in the publicly available profile. So. The province, as part of their housing needs report requirements. Requested that custom package that includes the core housing need by renter and owner, as well as the income by renter and owner, the way that I've showed it today. So we would, you know, anticipate that the province would have its custom package by early twenty twenty three for an update. And then we would kind of see it every five years thereafter, every time the census data is released. So that's, I mean, that's one of the, one of the problems is that our best data is also only sparsely reported. Other indicators that can go alongside of this. Unfortunately, aren't always updated for small communities like Revelstoke. And those are things like primary market vacancy rate and the cost of rental through C M H C data. So it could be a little bit more challenging to update that stuff on sort of an annual basis from a from sort of wanting to keep a closer tab on it. But core housing need is our best measure of of real housing vulnerability. So even though it's updated only every five years, it is really kind of the basis around which we do a lot of this work.
Fair enough. If that's the realistic option, then I think that's. Great. I'm also mindful that five-year jumps, by the time that next one rolls around, it's a different council term, and not everyone's going to be as familiar with those targets. So that as we set our, as we look at policy and how do we set this kind of work and these goals in policy is making sure that there is a very clear. Description of that metric so that future staff and the future council are prompted. Let's take a look and see what that looks like after Statscan comes out, so we can compare how we're doing. And our more local metrics, and I'm assuming we're going to try and do our best to keep an eye on this. With the lack of having that centralized data, but not to forget that that is a possibility, because I'm fascinated to see what it looks like.
Great. Counselor Thompson.
To Counselor Shalit's point, the one. Thing we can look at is we could ask Development Services to give us a yearly. Update on what has been built. In town, what has gotten occupancy or however we wanted to do it, whatever. But that could be a consistent metric you could look at every year.
That's what I'm looking for is what is that consistent K P I? It'd be like there, this is something that we can pinpoint that we're aiming for. And if we've got some interim milestones that we can be trying to hit with the goal that in five years, when we get that next census. So we're going to get one in a year, and then we get the next one. Hopefully, we've made made a nudge on that.
Yep. Go ahead, Counselor.
One other point I I just through the chair, could we get a copy of that presentation?
All right. Mr. Thompson is is definitely nodding his head sometimes we can. So, you know, when we talk about these things, Mr. Thompson, in my line of work. I operate a funeral home and and one of the biggest things for my senior clients. Is when they lose their spouse, how are they going to be able to continue to live in the community? So when we talk about the experience and we see people with a smaller income. And they're surviving only because their houses are paid off. But then we see the tax rate increase and and I've had many seniors come to me and go. Gary, I can't afford to pay my taxes. The only way I can do it is by deferring them and. And we'll deal with this down the road. And those are sorts of things that we want to actually pay attention to because it's that lived experience. Those seniors in our community that we still want to keep. Because God knows I am one of them. And as we start to see myself and my age group. Basically. Get to that retirement or past into our seventies. We look at that sort of thing and say, how can everybody survive? And so. Having these metrics and having be able to have this conversation. Is really an important thing for all of us as we move forward. So I just want you to keep kind of keep that in mind, if there's some way that we can. Keep those metrics and and kind of understand that if there ever is a way. To see what seniors are doing and how they're doing. Any other comments? Go ahead.
Sorry, I would I would anticipate that. That kind of nuance may come up through our engagement as we hear about, you know, the vulnerability of seniors to the community. And then we can, we can sort of cross-check it with some of the the age demographic data that's available. Through the existing housing needs report to to kind of ground ground truth what we hear through engagement and qualitative feedback. With some of the data to to also support. You know, there are very few communities in B C that are not looking at considerable seniors housing issue in the next ten years. So so I think that certainly it warrants. Particular attention in the housing action plan as we move forward for for sure.
Great. Thank you for that. Any comments from other councils? Counselor Ollie?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I'm just curious, the the projections for. Affordable market housing and non-market housing that that are coming from B C housing, our province contributions. The fruition of those have been slow to 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 arrive in, it's been slow to arrive in Revelstoke. And I'm just. How realistic do you believe? I mean, you've got eighty six and a hundred and three, or I think is your target or or what's forecast? Is that a reality? And is it in the right time?
I I I would say, I mean, I maybe I'll leave this to my to my colleague Cheryl, who's with B C housing to to respond to that, but. You know, I mean, housing development is a slow process and and certainly. I know that that can be frustrating to many councils. But at the same time, you know, there are unprecedented levels of investment happening for the province and the federal government right now and. And I know B C housing is is working hard to ensure that the projects they've selected. Are are sort of moving ahead, even if the process is slow. With regards to some of the more market-oriented work. In in Revelstoke, sometimes it's a it's a matter of forging the right partnerships. And that's certainly what we'll be looking at through the through the housing action plan, but we know that. You know, market rental, for example, there is a stream of financing available through C M H C that's quite popular with developers. That requires a ten percent component of affordable housing and ninety percent market. So it kind of meets some of those targets more balanced towards the market side, and so it meets some of those the those market rental needs. As they were laid out, but with a component of affordability. And we hear very positive things from developers about that financing stream. Because it's relatively low threshold, low bureaucracy in terms of accessing it. So. I I think I think it, you know, I will, I will say it's not unrealistic. And in fact, of a lot of the communities that I work in. Given that there are already ongoing conversation and and investments happening from B C housing. It may be a matter of mobilizing some new or different partnerships to achieve some of the other components of this, both on the. The deep subsidy side and on more on the market side of things. But I don't think it's unrealistic. In fact, I think like. I I would say that with. Positive municipal action and investments and the right partnerships. That these targets are actually fairly achievable, more so. Than we see in a lot of other communities where either the need is greater because it's a larger community or the issue. Has dragged on for longer or development approvals are tougher to get through. You know, a lot of larger urban areas. Suffer from very long development approvals processes. So I actually think that that. You know, Revelstoke has the opportunity here with a thoughtful housing action plan. To to actually make an impact and see some inroads on core housing need over the next ten years. And I would like to leave with that as a positive note. I think that with the right set of actions. And tools and partnerships, I think that these are very much achievable.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments, Councilors? Counselor Paul?
Thank you, Mayor Solz. No, in the report, the. On the income on ownership versus rental, I I found that interesting. In fact, I was, I thought was. Kind of impressive in the whole middle, it was pretty flat. And there wasn't a disparity. Yeah, when you got to the extreme ends, which of course you expect that, like that's. Shocking if it wasn't that way. So if anything, I was surprised that that idea of ownership versus. Rental ability was pretty flat. Further to comment just on the getting the report, I look forward to that. Also wondering, I can't remember if you said, but. This is. An interim sort of update and a report's coming later on. When do we expect that?
The report's close to being finalized. I will maybe pass that off to to Mr. Simon to. To talk about timelines for council. But, you know, I mean, we we wanted to to talk through the numbers first, but. The the sort of data baseline report is by and large ready to go. So certainly, I think we could have it delivered in a in a finished format to city staff. Before the year is out for certain.
That's good. The. You know, the whole discussion, all the data and stuff, and then all the qualifiers and the timelines and. You know, we look at the twenty eighteen report, you know, that's pretty much. Probably nice. You know, a lot of things have happened since twenty eighteen in multiple ways, so. And you're doing the best you can with that. So it's just a thing. And then when we look at twenty twenty three, so. We're, you know, council's looking for tangible stuff that we can actually do something about. And this is sort of nebulous data that's sort of. It's going to feed nebulous data in the future. It's just an observation. Further to counsel, you're you're looking for key. Performance, yeah. So and the answer is. Data that we have today is already antiquated. And I'm not criticizing the report because it's. It's just the reality, so. And and and, you know, from my perspective, like we kind of know the crisis at any. Any given moment on housing, like we have intuitively feel feel it. And so this is data that. Confirms what we already know. And but it's it's driven towards policy. And then again, Counselor Shalit. When you say, okay, well. You know, five years' time, new council. It doesn't matter what we do. It's going to be totally forgotten. And nobody going through the exercise again. From scratch, probably. Yeah, you won't know. Let's work on how we can do something, so. I think those are my comments. Yeah, that's just sort of general observations.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Ollie?
Just, I know the commitment by the province right now to affordable housing is is major. What, how subject is that to a different political? Regime? Say the liberals take over from the N D P. How does that affect? The B C housing policy?
Well, I think now we're.
I know it's major, yeah.
Injecture into this whole thing, but any? Any comment or do we dare comment on that, Mr. Thompson? As to how things would move forward. Once things are in the works, I'll stick my neck out. Once things are in the works, for the most part. Programs will be fulfilled if if the government actually wants to succeed, but I'll I'll let you make comment.
I I would agree with that. I mean, I think we've seen a commitment from the current government to this ten-year. This ten-year action plan, the thirty-point plan on housing in B C. And I think that that. The fulfillment fulfillment of that plan is well underway already with the investments that are being made. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to speculate on where a future, a future government might go for the province. I think that that may depend on which way the political winds are blowing at any given election time, so.
That's where I'm going. It's great. We have a commitment for the first phase or some kind of phase of B C housing, but how? You know, if that's for eighty six units, the other other a hundred and three or a hundred and six that are pending. Is that likely to be fulfilled?
Absolutely. We're into the market. We're moving forward on that. I think I think those things will be fulfilled. I'd like to move on. I think unless you have more comments or questions for Mr. Thompson. I think we need to move on to the next step. We've been at this a long time. Mr. Thompson, I want to thank you for your report, for your input. I think knowing these things is is confirming what we felt, and I really appreciate that. That you're bringing this forward to us. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship and counsel.
All right, Mr. Simon, we are going to move on to the O C P growth management. Ms. Henderson is here as well, so I will throw it over to you, Mr. Simon, and we can move on.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, Nancy Henderson, who is a senior local government advisor from. Urban Systems is here to give you a presentation. And again, too, she's been working with Ms. Wade and the project team for. O C P update, and she has a presentation regarding growth management for you guys as part of the work we've been doing, which is very exciting. So I will pass it over to her.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Ms. Henderson. Glad to see you again and be here. You're now able to share the screen, so we'll leave it to you.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. Again, I'm glad to be back. And I will just start my presentation off here. So you have had a pretty long data-heavy meeting so far, and I'm going to add to that a little bit, but I'm going to try to keep it high level. And I've got lots of graphic slides, so I'm hoping it will help. Kind of move this along and and make it easy to understand. So we have been retained by the city on a number of fronts to sort of assist with the G I S. Layers that the city has and improving those as well as developing a residential land use inventory. And the first phase of that is evaluating the residential growth potential for the city. So for the presentation today, what I'd like to do is focus on, you know, briefly go over the purpose and context of this analysis. We've done a demand and supply analysis and go over that to kind of show you what we've found out. And we've also assessed each neighborhood within Revelstoke for their growth potential and a few other interesting. Sort of land use analysis that we'll share. And then we've done a smart growth evaluation to essentially. Rank, you know, the neighborhoods onto how they can best accommodate growth. Along with some of the recommendations and priorities that have come up through the O C P. Consultation process, and then we'll briefly go over the next steps. So starting out with the sort of context of this is through the O C P. There's been some engagement about how, you know, Revelstoke should grow and and some discussions around growth and how it should look like. And the initial recommendations were that the community was more supportive of a centralized development model or smart growth. Rather than sprawling urban growth into sort of the periphery of the community and the steep slopes. And that there's been an identified need for infill development opportunities. And particularly around the missing middle, which I believe is a term that councils heard before, but more ground-oriented multifamily. And and apartment housing. And, you know, that really reflects, I think, what you've just been listening to in terms of the affordability issues in the community. And then these mixed-use and multifamily-type housing can meet much of that need. So this was considered as we moved through the process. So we've done a demand analysis by looking at the, you know, the population projections that Matt's also touched on today, so we'll move through that quite quickly. And then we've done two different supply analysis, ones based on development applications. Some that are already with the the city as well as a vacant and underdeveloped lands analysis is another method that we use. And then we've done these evaluations based on the smart growth or centralized model of growth and. And sort of discussing, we've also done two different scenarios that are more of a dispersed growth method or status quo, if you will. So we've got some comparables that we can show you with that as well. And the missing middle, as mentioned, comes up, I think, quite a bit. It's sort of a North American wide phenomenon, but. Over the last, you know, couple decades, there's been a lot of single-family housing that has got built and not a lot of townhouses and. And fourplexes, duplexes and small apartment buildings. And this is really seen. And this is really seen quite widely in Revelstoke, as well as a real missing a housing type and housing option in the community and something that the OCP consultation to date has identified as something to bolster moving forward. So in terms of the projected housing demand for 2041, you're going to see that same number that Mr. Thompson just presented with, you know, 1,219 households moving into the community by 2041, based on the high-growth scenario. So that is the analysis that's been elected to use for the OCP analysis, more so that you're overplanning for growth, so that if you do continue on on this high growth as you have for the last five years, that you're ready for it. So we took, we looked at three scenarios that were developed through the consultation. Just going to really focus on the, on the high-growth scenario, but in terms of there's a low population, there's more of a day, more of a low population and the baseline population. But we've really focused in on the high because that's what the OCP is looking at. But we did complete three different scenarios for the centralized development scenario as well, which has identified that to accommodate future growth based on utilizing sort of standard densities for different types of housing developed by UBC School of Regional Planning, Urban and Regional Planning, and then using sort of the average amount of land for each different type of development. And then adding additional 30% to take care of, you know, roads and infrastructure needs and park needs and so on. So that resulted in a need for 28 hectares or roughly just under 70 acres of land in order to accommodate those 1,219 units in the future. And you'll see that you know, if you had a lower growth rate, you obviously would need less land to accommodate that. So the OCP, when they were looking at, I think, this consultation, they looked at three different models. One is the historic land use. If you're just to continue on with the current housing mix that is currently in the community, which is 78% single-family, and that includes mobile homes as well, you would need 45 hectares of gross land to basically meet the growth demands over the next 20 years. And if you use more of a dispersed development model, which has 50% single-family and 50% multifamily, 25% apartment, you'd need 35 hectares of land. And the centralized development model is requiring the least land of all at 28 hectares, which is split up by 25% single-family, 25% apartment, and then 50% are broken out into what we'll call ground-oriented multifamily. So the centralized development would require less land than the three models. So one thing that I think people find shocking right away is when they see that split is they're going, oh, we wouldn't want that much apartment in Revelstoke because, you know, we're predominantly, you know, a small community with lots of single-family. But if those are your housing targets over the next 20 years and that you do have 1,219 households developed, the housing split would change from 78% single-family to 63% single-family. So even with those pretty strong targets, you're still predominantly single-family at 63% in 2041 and 21% ground-oriented multifamily and only 16% at apartment. So I think just when talking to the community, these are important things to consider. So in order to help kind of decide, like to figure out how, how are we going to prove out that there's a supply adequate to accommodate this growth in Revelstoke, we have been assisting the city with improving the GIS layers. And then we've developed this web map tool. We've got this on our own servers right now. We want to work with the city to pass this over to once you get your GIS upgraded. But we've created this web tool that's a very interactive web tool, and it shows, we've mapped out like all the different applications, the development applications that are currently on the books in the city. Those are all outlined in yellow in case you're interested. We've developed, we've also mapped out the building age. So, sorry. We've mapped out the building age. So you can see the darker colors are the older properties in town and the lighter colors are the newer properties. And this, you know, map or this little graph right here shows the years built. And on the actual web map, you could actually click on each on each graph and figure out how many units were built on a particular year and time in the history of Revelstoke. We've got the building stories as well, so you get an idea of how many stories there are. One thing that came up in the OCP focus group is there's an interest just in knowing, you know, how many out-of-town residents we have in Revelstoke. So we have anyone with an out-of-town mailing addresses identified and you, and as you're sort of scrolling around the map, these numbers will change depending on what's in the window. So you could look at the whole city or you could look at a particular neighborhood. We've got the development applications that then translates into the number of units in that application. So if you're interested in a particular area of downtown and what's going on, you could kind of figure out how many units are proposed in any one area, as well as the average year built in that area and if it's been, and the average year of renovation as well. And housing type, the breakdown of the year built. And yeah, so this is what's helped us to develop this analysis that we've done. And we've also created similar web maps that illustrate the vacant land in the community, which has also really helped in terms of, you know, determining, you know, we've identified how much vacant land you need. And then we can dive in and figure out where exactly it is and what it looks like, and we could put constraints over environmentally sensitive areas and so on. So here, there's two different colors, and the purple are ones that are touched by an environmentally sensitive area or steep slope. Doesn't mean that it's not developable, but it might just have other constraints. Then the green ones, which are are vacant and they don't have, at least at a mapping level, any environmental sensitivity that have been identified. And then, you know, we can go through this side and you can search based on BC assessment data, different sizes of vacant parcels based on OCP designation or zoning. And then it also kind of pop up and provide some additional information here. And we've created a similar web tool for under for underdeveloped lands as well. And underdeveloped lands are defined as properties that the built value is worth 25% or less of the total value. So quite often, they've just been depreciated significantly, or it's, you know, a very valuable land piece with, you know, a small house on it, for example. And the purpose of doing this was really to trigger what else do you have to work with and sort of identify properties of interest potentially. So this has helped us complete this analysis. And I mean, we can conclude by the information here that there's a lot of land in Revelstoke that is certainly accommodate the growth in the next 20 years. But, you know, Revelstoke's going to be a lot longer than that. So that's, this is a good thing. But it doesn't appear to be a need to be going after boundary expansion. And we're finding that there's certainly ability to accommodate the growth for the next 20 years, especially under the centralized development model. So then, just to kind of look at the supply, and this is looking at it, I'll show you the, the underdevelopment vacant as well, but this one is based on the applications that you have. Oh, here, the applications that you have in the hopper. So every application, and this is being provided by the Development Services Department, there's only one that I should probably bring to your attention that doesn't fit the normal bill, but anything outlined in yellow is a development application. On the actual map that you have here, you can click on it and it will tell you how many units were in the application. And then we've also identified the Oscar Lands as a potential area that has, can accommodate residential growth, but it's owned by the city. So we factored that into the analysis as well. And I know there might be other uses the city has ideas for that land, but that was just part of the analysis. And so we've looked at the upcoming supply. And this is essentially, we've just taken out the, you know, only looking at residential applications. There's other applications for hotels and industrial, but this is just residential. We've tracked the number of units. And we've also brought in the Johnson Heights Neighborhood Plan, which is in draft form, but it does have 501 proposed units, and we've utilized the breakdown in that neighborhood plan. Which, this, got two components of this, but this is sort of showing that you've got 1,126 units already in the hopper with a 1,219-unit goal for 2041. So if all of these applications come to fruition and build out over the next 20 years, you're most of the way there. The other thing that I think's really interesting to draw your attention to is the unit mix is that of this the proposed applications, 55%, sorry about that, but 55% were apartments. And 14% ground-oriented, so still that missing middle is a bit of a struggle with 32% single-family. The second part of this analysis is that we've looked at the, at the Revelstoke Mountain Resorts and, and also which I think, so what we did here is we took recognizing that the Revelstoke Mountain Resort is predominantly going to be focusing on tourist accommodation and second homeownership. But there is, I think, an expectation that, you know, 25% of the golf course lands would likely be quite attractive to local residents or potentially second homeowners that become local residents in the future. And 50% of the Learning Center, the Golf Learning Center, which is down already sort of in the valley and part of the community or closer to the community. So we've made an assumption that there would be, you know, roughly units coming from there, as well as a portion of Mackenzie Village, which would be, which was, I think, always planned to be roughly one-third residential. So we've identified that. And when you total these up, again, the split is again interesting, 50% apartment, 25% ground-oriented, and 25% single family. It comes to 1,742 units, which is beyond your growth needs for 2041. But, you know, one notes I did here is that there has been a bit of a of a risk when you hit economic downturns of multifamily projects not moving forward. In economic downturns, developers tend to like to build single families because there's much less risk. And there's also a local trend to ultimately build lower densities than planned. And I think we've seen this in Mackenzie Village as an example. So, you know, it's something to keep in mind when you're looking at policy and zoning by law development moving forward. So the other supply analysis that we did was looking at the vacant and underdeveloped lands using those UBC numbers. And, you know, what we've identified in terms of vacant lands is you've got, these are only, the ones on this map right now are only residential vacant lands that have a residential OCP designation. So one of the residential OCP designations, there's many. But there's, this doesn't even include the future growth. So Mackenzie Village, for example, isn't highlighted in this particular map. So that would be beyond that. So here, there's already 35 hectares of vacant lands that have, that are non-environmentally sensitive and much more with environmental sensitivity. And then looking at underdeveloped lands, this includes underdeveloped lands, again, residential at 93 and 71 hectares. But then when you take the urban reserve and the future growth lands, that jumps to 156 hectares. And, oh, so that should be, that should be hectares, 97 hectares without ESA mapping, so. You've got quite a bit to work with, which is great news. The other thing to consider when looking at this is housing age. You know, there's a fairly significant amount of of housing in Revelstoke that's older, with the majority in the 60s and 70s. And, you know, that, that stock, sometimes you're starting to see that in many communities, starting to come down or significantly be renovated. And there might be opportunities to even change, you know, how, if you're doing a major renovation, do you create a suite? Or multiple units potentially if the zoning allowed. And we're certainly seeing that in, in Kelowna with some zoning that incents, you know, one wartime house getting turned into three or four units. And it's become very popular. Then what we've done is we've, we've taken this information and we've, the most sort of, let's say, for about the seven, I think we've done these for seven neighborhoods where there's the majority of the residential population, is we've broken this down into a neighborhood level, and we've provided assessments so that you can look at, you know, what's the building age in South Revelstoke? What's the housing type split? You know, what's the ownership split? What's the OCP designation? You know, the average year built, opportunities and constraints facing that neighborhood, average lot size, development applications, how does that translate into units? And the vacant lands, which I think is quite interesting because something like South Revelstoke, it only has two hectares of vacant lands, which is not a lot. And then we've got, you know, we're showing here the citywide housing choice targets based on the centralized model. And then, you know, what that, that 2041 housing split would be. And I think the idea would be that the OCP consultant could utilize these in engaging the community moving forward. And we've also got this for Johnson Heights as another example where you see, you know, much more vacant land. And then we've also for Johnson Heights Neighborhood Park or Neighborhood Plan, is you've also created a housing target split based on the proposed neighborhood plan, which shows roughly, like, I think, can't really see that, but it's about a 58 a 58% to 42% split from single-family being the 42%. So that would be in 2041 at buildout. So utilizing this information, there's, working with the OCP focus group, and this way, there was a desire to be able to communicate to the community at a more simplistic level where growth could potentially go moving forward. And so what we did is we've developed this matrix, and we essentially had four different categories with different scoring. Some of it is subjective and some of it's objective or quantitative and qualitative, if you will. So some of it is like, you know, based on conversations with Mr. Black in terms of the engineering capacity in each neighborhood. Some of it's based on like map assessments of ESAs. We've utilized the WALK score, you know, proximity to servicing, average lot size, vacant land, and underdeveloped land in the neighborhood. And then a land use option, so kind of doing, this is where it's more qualitative, looking at the OCP land use mix, the vacant lot size in that neighborhood and the potential for choosing housing choice. Because you might have some neighborhoods that have quite a lot of vacant land, but they're very small lots and would require consolidation, and they just become more challenging. So they, in that case, would have a lower score. And then the number of proposed units based on the development applications. And we ran this through every neighborhood in Revelstoke based on a neighborhood map that was provided by, by Mr. Black and his team, which is actually great. It's, I think, smaller neighborhoods than many people might identify in Revelstoke. But from an infrastructure servicing perspective, it worked really well to have that smaller neighborhood base. And these colors in this map also will relate back to those neighborhood sheets. They're all color-coded. Then we scored using the matrix. So this was the ranking that came up with, so this is like the overall arching score, and I will, we've provided a map for each component. So the smart growth score, the development potential score, the infill capacity score, and the development and housing choice. Because it's really important to look at those individually, and especially when talking to the community about the findings. Because the best score doesn't mean that that's where all the development's going to go. It might be where the the development would be best suited, but it doesn't necessarily have all those attributes. So I'll just go through each, each map with you quickly. So we have the centralized growth, so evaluation summary. So the darker shades here for each neighborhood highlight the ability to accommodate smart centralized growth. So not necessarily the most number of units. So South Revelstoke ranked the highest. And having discussions with the OCP focus group, I mean, this is, they were, it was great to identify, well, this might cause a concern in South Revelstoke, like why should they have to accommodate all the growth? But this is where the smartest growth would occur in Revelstoke, based on the matrix and servicing existing services, access to amenities, and so on. And then it, as you can see, the, the ranking, the lighter colors are lower scores. And then this is this based on the smart growth criteria, so proximity to infrastructure and amenities. So infrastructure is considered in both smart growth and, and centralized growth. And it's obviously very important to the city because it's very expensive. And it's obviously very important to the city because it's very expensive to um, provide infrastructure to, to new areas and upgrade infrastructure. So here, when you're looking at uh, infrastructure and amenities, you know, the central business district and central Revelstoke are, are very strong. In terms of their, their points, uh, but they don't necessarily uh, rise to the top because of some of the other limitations. In these areas, so for example, in central Revelstoke and the central business uh, area, the lots are very small. And so it's quite complex to get a large number of units in those areas. And then we have like the residential housing potential considering environmental and servicing. Um, so where it's well serviced by existing infrastructure and has lower impacts on environmentally sensitive lands. And so these more uh, urban, uh, older neighborhoods have a lot less uh, environmental sensitivity unless you're right next to the river. And um, and lots of uh, great infrastructure servicing on a grid pattern kind of throughout. Where some, this area in here, uh, for example, like lower Arrow Heights. Has sewer only at like sort of the periphery of the community and i- it's sort of starting to go into Victoria Heights. And the Mackenzie Village and Upper Arrow Heights is sort of well serviced, but uh, it's not everywhere. And the resort lands has, you know, very in-depth servicing plans to accommodate growth in that area. So then this is the uh, another of the, sort of the summary slide, kind of showing when you're looking at all the different areas and you're adding them together. Um, you know, in terms of smart centralized growth, uh, you know, South Revelstoke and sort of the surrounding neighborhoods. Uh, come out as to an area to identify where, uh, you know, we would recommend that you. Uh, place growth moving forward in order to facilitate this centralized smart growth model that's come up through constant consultations with the O C P. Yeah, so basically from here, I'll just kind of go into like the next steps and then happy to answer any question that council has. Um, we've developed a residential land use inventory report. Uh, that explains sort of all the methodology and uh, provides the data that will hand over to the city so that you have that on record. Um, and that that's available for you in the future. Um, we've also uh, be providing this information, we've been working with the O C P consultants. And I believe Ms. Learn may be in on this call as well. Um, and that she's going to be moving forward with the O C P consultations are planned to be launched uh, in November. And so we'll provide any assistance to her in, in that endeavor. Uh, we'd also like to work with the city to provide this web tool, uh, information and the platform to improve the city's G I S. Uh, moving forward, uh, there's just a, a need to, I think, move from the GeoCore tech system that you currently have. And once that takes place, we'll be able to, to work with you and, and bring this information over. Uh, we've also come across like through our analysis, a list of properties and question to review the land use designations, they just seem to be a bit tricky. Um, you know, for example, part of the Downey Mill has urban reserve. Uh, on it, so we, just anything like that that we see will bring to staff's attention to consider, uh, maybe through the O C P. Um, as you go through, so, yeah, happy to answer any questions that council may have at this time.
Ms. Henderson, any uh, questions or comments from council? I think there's a lot of information that we just took in and um, so, Councilor Short?
Yeah, it's explored, it's great. Uh, I really liked the look of that web tool. That is everything that I, the, the live reports and being able to manipulate the data and the assumptions for different questions. But having that database at your fingertips to answer those questions smart. Uh, I'm curious as part of these plans, is this part of the development services? Software upgrades, like will this eventually have a potential to go into the public domain in some way, I guess is what I'm getting at.
So I will ask that of Mr. Simon, any comments on, on that, Mr. Simon? Is this uh, something that will fit with what uh, our upgrades are happening in your department and uh. Availability for this information, is it uh, is it private or will it eventually become public uh, domain?
Uh, to your worship and this will require some coordination with Mr. Black and, and his group as well as Ms. Henderson. And they've been very helpful in getting a lot of this info for us, but the idea would be yes, um, as much information as we can provide available to the public. Without having any issues associated with private information being released. Then our, our team would be looking to provide that in the form of web mapping, um, when that can actually come to fruition. Um, that's going to require some further internal conversations to um, work out some of the logistics.
Thank you for that, it's, you got a thumbs up from the council. Uh, any other comments or questions, councillors? Councilor Palmer?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Solson, uh, thank you for the presentation and uh, look forward to getting a copy of this report. Lot of numbers to try and simulate. Couple of questions, um. The, I've got a couple of comments, a couple of, I'll try and say though, um. So the supply, basically based on the population study. We're actually in pretty good shape as far as land supply on where we're going, I think that's. First half of the presentation, that's the, there, do you concur with that? Ms. Henderson?
Uh, yes, through the chair, I think in terms of land supply, Revelstoke, I mean, certainly for the twenty-year horizon is doing quite well. Um, as, you know, but it's, it's definitely you're in a mountain environment with steep slopes and environmentally sensitive areas. Um, so I s- I think it's important to be um, economical with the land that you do have.
Then on the, uh, this uh, question, so with council's considering uh, before us right now of um. Amendments to allow garden suites and carriage homes in all residential areas. Uh, so that's, that's a pretty big supply component, was that integrated in this study?
Yes, it was, uh, so as we went through the matrix, uh, we essentially were looking at the infill potential. And, you know, working in other communities, um. We've got, you know, we find that carriage homes are great and they add up over time and I certainly encourage their use. Uh, but they're quite expensive uh, for the average homeowner to, to put in place, so the uptake is often, you know. In a, in a town of Revelstoke side, like ten a year would be a lot probably to come on stream. Um, which over twenty years does add up to be, you know, two hundred units and fairly significant, but. It's, it can't be the only solution.
Um, and then. Uh, on the uh. I guess further on that, and so you're mapping and sort of the, on the scorecard, you went through those several uh, slides and the scorecard. I think probably one of the immediate applications for council is. When we look at those, where should we or where should we not encourage developments? That's through changes in the O C P in particular, but also zoning. And um, you know, I, I think that some of that data might be useful as we, uh, we're going to have more discussion on short-term rentals. And I know last month the dialogue here at all, but it's. Where, where are the needs? Because that's basically, it's kind of a needs assessment that you did where, there's a portion of that in there. Um, but uh, the other is on the garden suites and carriage homes, you know, should. I guess a question for you, maybe it's a, it's really a planning question, but from your perspective. When we start to change O C P and zoning that allows higher density, these growth, smart growth. Components, are we better to take a cautious approach looking at those? These, they turn highest investment in those, that kind of mapping. Instead of doing the right kind of broad across the community, specifically uh, in. Single-family homes when we allow higher density through whatever means, um. Would it be a better approach to go into those zones where it makes sense on servicing and all those other components? I don't know if you have a comment or just.
Yeah, I would certainly recommend, uh, you know, in your sort of downtown central Revelstoke, so Revelstoke area. Uh, you know, where you have, you know, maybe you look even a little bit outside the box and it, and it's three units uh, per lot. Uh, that you might allow um, to have infill because you're probably in walking distance to most amenities, less reliance on the automobile. Close to services, um, and then as you move out away from the central core, you know, maybe it, it is the suite or carriage house option. Um, and you also have, you know, several large lots, uh, I think from the days of septic tanks in some of these areas too. Which would facilitate uh, infill subdivision, um, and it, those are the types of things to encourage. As a, as a community for sure. And, you know, when you have also limited developers in a community, when you provide some of those options to the average homeowner. Uh, I mean, it can make housing more attainable for them, uh, but then you have more developers. Um, providing more housing in your community on a small scale, but it's definitely impactful over time.
Um, on your um, model, or those, the scorecard thing, what, I could sort of see where you're going on most of them. The one that kind of surprised me a little bit was um, a stronger rating on the Big Eddie compared to the Columbia Park. Uh, so that was kind of interesting, I, I'm going to get the report, I'll take a look at it. But the one in particular that I noted was on servicing, so um, Big Eddie does not have sewer servicing. Whereas all Columbia Park, so I was a little bit surprised on, on that, um, because it was rating. Compared to um, Arrow Heights on some of the charts rating uh, Arrow Heights, that little unsuhr area. To Big Eddie, whereas Big Eddie, that's a, that's a big challenge, getting uh, sewer servicing there, whereas. You know, Cl- uh, Arrow Heights in particular is. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a relatively easy area to, in comparison to sewer, so that was just uh. A thing that you might want to just double check, or maybe you thought that a little bit already.
Yeah, and I think it's just looking at some of the components of the mapping, because I think overall Arrow Heights scored fairly well. Um, lower Arrow Height, or yeah, lower Arrow Heights. And um, Big Eddie did, you know, it, I think overall it was actually fairly low. And Arrow Heights was above it, um, like upper Arrow Heights was second. And lower Arrow Heights is still above Big Eddie. Um, but yeah, we see Big Eddie is fairly challenging, but it did score higher on like some vacant lands that they have. You know, they do have a couple of applications, but we know it's challenging to service, so we'll look a little closer at that. I wanted to look a little closer at Laurel, Laurel Arrow Heights as well, uh, because I think that there's some vacant lands there. Um, that might increase its score a little bit, we're just investigating them. Uh, some of them, like not, it's based on, you know, the quality of the data. And B C assessment data has, you know, there's a few things that we have some questions on that we want to dive further into.
Um, good, and uh, the. Yeah, the, the other thing in uh, the Big Eddie is there's some flood pointing areas to. Yeah, that's all I have for now, thank you very much.
Sure, any other comments from councillors? Go through it.
Just on, on the enti- entities that go into smart growth. What uh, maybe you could supportability play into it and uh, you know, it's that big part of your evaluation?
Yeah, this is where we're looking at housing cho- choice and housing type uh, through, throughout the matrix. Uh, so if it was in a neighborhood that, you know, there is larger parcels that could accommodate some multifamily. Uh, we looked at the existing uh, O C P land use mixes too, where the, many neighborhoods have, you know, some high density. You know, and looking at like the likelihood of them being accepted in the neighborhood. Uh, and then existing infrastructure close to schools and shops. Those, those types of things all, all factored in in some way.
Yeah, I, I guess the uh, infrastructure elements that are in place enable uh, more ef- efficient and more, less costly development.
Exactly, and that's where you, sorry, through the chair, but that's where you see like those. Community, the, the neighborhoods that are further out and they don't have services, you know, really scoring quite low.
Okay, well, uh, thank you, Councilor Palmer, one more comment?
Yeah, so just, because it's relevant, uh, so uh, throughout your presentation, you talked about smart growth, smart growth principles. Uh, you had an alternative term, I've forgotten what it was, but mostly you're using the smart growth and. Uh, yeah, a little bit tongue-in-cheek, I was, you know, people are in favor of smart growth, smart growth as opposed to dumb growth, but um. The, specifically, so we're looking at taking out in the O C, in the O C P, smart growth checklist. And uh, so we're referring to it here, uh, and uh, staff have explained why. But I just wanted to hear from your perspective, because it was one that I flagged in, it on a checklist in this O C P. Again, maybe it's outside kind of your realm, but uh, um, it, it was a very trendy thing a decade or fifteen years ago. And was put in and now it's being proposed to take out, and I didn't know you used some alternate terminology from time to time.
Ms. Henderson?
Uh, through the chair, I actually hadn't heard of the smart growth checklist being in or out of the O C P. But yes, it was certainly trendy uh, several years ago, you know, to kind of go through those checklists and, and look at the, even is it, you know. Uh, it doesn't have a sort of a building ranking of lead and that type of things, but yeah, I'd say in general, most communities are leaning towards. That type of growth and not necessarily uh, streamlining smart growth any longer because it's just expected.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments, councillors? Seeing none, thanks, Ms. Henderson, appreciate your time and uh, your presentation. Uh, we are now going to move on to uh, the uh. Uh, O C P B C Housing Project Downey Street, so Mr. Simon, I'll turn it over to you and your colleagues with B C.
Uh, thank you, your worship. So I'm just, uh, once I get host capabilities and I can share my screen, I have a very brief presentation for you. And as indicated, yes, our, our colleagues from B C Housing are here, I will do my best to. Answer any questions that you guys have about the project, um, but they are here to help assist as well if there's anything. Where we want to start getting into some of the details, um, the intent today is to really give council kind of a high-level update. Um, just to show council and the community that this project is continuing to progress through the review process. And we thought that committee of the whole uh, for that update would be an appropriate avenue. So we do want to keep it um, a little bit high level, obviously this will be brought back to council for formal uh, consideration. Um, right now, just with the fact that there's so many projects on the go and we have a zoning bylaw that's going through a repeal and replace process. Instead of throwing another um, amendment to our current zoning bylaw in the mix, which does pose some challenges for sequencing. Um, staff and, and the applicant thought that uh, presentation to committee of the whole to show the progress with respect to where we're at here would be an appropriate avenue. So again, just wanted to give a, a brief introduction to council and to show how previous community consultation. Has been incorporated into the overall development concept for the Downey Street site. So B C Housing, just to give you guys some brief background, acquired the old Mount Bagby School site in February twenty nineteen. The site is located in the South Side neighborhood at Fourth Street in Downey and it is also bounded by Edward Street to the south. Between February twenty twenty and September twenty twenty, B C Housing led three comprehensive community engagement events. These were ultimately used to help refine a development concept in advance of submitting the formal rezoning and O C P amendment application. Um, so this led to a development concept that was based on robust community feedback and engagement. To try and uh, show how this central piece within the South Side neighborhood could be developed in a way that would be very beneficial for the community in the long term. So the, the concept that is, was submitted to city staff for review and that will be presented to council for formal consideration. Includes three four-story apartment buildings, each with rowhouse dwelling units located facing the street. The intent with this is so that there is a uh, reduced impact of overall amassing, so you don't just have big apartment blocks. That are immediately adjacent to the street, where there are single-family dwellings on the adjacent side of the, of the street there. So it will be a stepping back approach where you have the townhouses that will be a couple of stories and then in behind the townhouses. You would have the four-story apartment buildings and this provides for a more effective transition. Um, to ensure that the development is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. So in total, um, and this is approximate right now, the numbers, you know, could potentially change, but we're not anticipating any major changes at this point. Um, about a hundred and seventy-four dwelling units, um, again, plus minus one or two. Uh, with a mix of bachelor units up to three-bedroom units, this includes sixteen two-story rowhouse units. So units will be owned by BC Housing and rented, targeting low, moderate income families, seniors and youth. The commercial in buildings one and three will include uses such as daycares, community care facilities, convenient stores, restaurants, retail, personal and professional service establishments, establishments. So uses that are, you know, required for a diverse community. It's about just under 200 square meters, 195 square meters total of commercial space between the two buildings. So getting into some basic high-level details about building and site design. 182 parking stalls are intended to be provided on site. This would ultimately be an average of one parking stall required per unit. Eight parking stalls would be required for the commercial, which again gets out to about one per 25 square meters, which would typically exceed the requirements that we have currently in the zoning bylaw. So, you know, parking for the commercial uses isn't anticipated to be a major concern. And due to the walkability as well associated with the development, just where it's located. You know, one per dwelling unit to ensure that we have sufficient space for accommodating multiple dwelling units on site is proposed. There will be a mixture of above-ground and underground parking associated with this development. Below-ground parking was quite a key central concept that came from the community engagement as well. Conceptual renderings were submitted with the application. They were included in the report package for council as well. Important to keep in mind that again, we are at the rezoning OCP amendment stage. So the real key parameters, and of course, there will be discussions on details. But the key parameters when you're at this stage in the application process is really considerations of use and density. Is the use appropriate for the neighborhood? Is the density appropriate for the neighborhood? So the, the final renderings will ultimately come back to council for a forming character development permit after we've gotten through the rezoning OCP amendment stage. You know, you will see design principles that are focused around access and circulation. I've been really looking at reinforcing that pedestrian character of the project to make sure that it's a, it's an open inviting ultimate development. The rowhouses will each have their own private access path to, to maintain that, that sense of, of ownership that it is a unit that is dedicated for, for one family, because it obviously will be a multitude of dwelling types on site. There will be extensive landscaping proposed around the perimeter and as well as located on the site. And again, this is an item that will ultimately be finalized as part of the future forming character development permit. And amenity spaces as well will be provided on site. High level right now, there's been discussions about using it potentially as a community garden or a fenced-in dog run. And these are conversations that the proponent Development Services and other internal departments are having to, to make sure that the amenity spaces is providing something that's a necessity. So looking high level at some of the public consultation that we've had to date. Three community engagement events, as previously indicated, and posting of the information on BC Housing's Let's Talk Housing webpage. BC Housing has had conversations with various stakeholders in the community, including the Revelstoke Community Housing Society. Been working with indigenous bands in the area, and there was a site visit that was undertaken with the Adams Lake Band on site to go walk the site. Internal, external agency referral has occurred and the proposal has been presented to the Advisory Planning Commission, who did pass a resolution of support for the project. So that concludes the presentation. Again, we just wanted to present the high-level concept to council at this time in advance of formal council consideration. So that council and the community are aware of the progress that has been made on this project. And we do anticipate it coming to, to council shortly. Again, the idea is that we're not overloading council with zoning bylaw changes when we're going through a repeal and replace zoning bylaw process. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to help answer them. And again, we do have the proponents here as well. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Simon. I know that this is done, got through lots of engagement with the community and appreciate that. And so I'm just going to go to council and see if there's any comments. Any questions, councillor Palmer? You have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor Solz. So my, my, I'm kind of late to the game here because most of that meeting consultation happened before my time on council. So these are just some, hopefully some questions and points that help inform some of that. I'm not trying to stir the pot on all the work that's been done to date. So thank you very much and thank you for the report, Mr. Simon. That is very helpful for me going through it in preparation. So in no particular order, I'll start with the first one, would be address. And I know this, so the 420. So I, I grew up in social housing or subsidized housing. And in, there is a propensity towards stigmatization of those that live there. I question the wisdom behind the address. So something to keep in mind, I don't know what the process is on, on that. But in addition to that stigma, this is most, you know, largely facing onto Fourth Street. So I just wondered if a more appropriate address is Fourth Street. Because you have Downey, Fourth and Edward. And so, so those are just some thoughts on that. Don't necessarily need any feedback on that right now. Master transportation plan. So we're going through the, engineers going through the master transportation plan. So I have some questions in, you know, so hopefully that's being taken in consideration with the master transportation plan. In, in how, how we look at the future of how we're expanding. So specifically on this, some of the concerns I have, and again, I'm not trying to diminish the public, but it's already there. But the, the walkability along Victoria's, or sorry, Fourth Street in particular. You know, this, I'll, I'll be very blunt on the, so I know you have the step, the step back approach. So the, the townhouse is in the step back approach. To tell the truth, to me, it feels very 1950-ish in kind of the concepts, the design concepts. And I know there's financial constraints and all that kind of thing. Personally, I would prefer a higher, higher building, more density, more green space around. And then thinking about how, rather than, you know, big parking lot in behind, how do you create connectivity for the community? And also a better living experience for the residents there. The, the green space for that kind of population is very, very minimal. The other, so that's just a comment, you don't need. But looking at that walkability, is there a way of creating better multipurpose sort of connections through the property? So just some, I, you know, looking at with the engineering, with their folks, their, their consultants. The other is the utilization of city land. So again, getting to Edward Street and Downey Street. And this will come to a particular question of those traffic impacts that are happening there. And is there a better way of looking at traffic patterns? Specifically, this is kind of more engineering stuff, but Downey Street compared to the side street, I can't remember the name. I know the other little one. So there's a duplication of roads there. And I think there's a lot of property there that we could actually, city-owned land, that we could push out the, the green spaces, particularly on Downey Street. But also when we look at South Side, that how the vehicles are going in there to discourage on-street on Edward and Downey, for that matter. Parking, can we squeeze those roads, create more public space, green space that would be beneficial to that? The ambience of, of, of these developments. So those are some of the things I would like to see how we can be smarter. And also how the transportation, you know, linking between the connectivity going into the development and into the South Side market. It's almost an intersection, but it's a little bit offset there. And again, that's engineering stuff, but maybe there's some opportunities to make improvements. So that, the specific question on that is traffic impact study. Have we done traffic impact or required that of the developer?
Mr. Simon?
Through your worship, I believe, I'm trying to recall if it was included in the application package that was in the attachment for council. There was, I believe, a generation memo that was generated as part of this project. And I know Mr. Black had reviewed all the technical analysis as part of the referral of this application. And the proponent has been in consultation since I believe February 2020 to make sure that we've reviewed the transportation elements accordingly. And I see that Mr. Black would probably like to add on to that.
Kbar?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, there was a traffic impact study done for this project. The biggest traffic generator at this location was going to be the commercial. And the generation was going to be extremely minor. In addition, staff has recommended that the proponent consider some traffic calming opportunities to be permanently constructed on Fourth Street to further enhance the pedestrian experience along Fourth Street as part of this project.
Okay, so through the chair, I know it's only 174 units. But we're already facing fairly significant pressures on Fourth Street. And so, and you know, eventually, you could talk about traffic calming, but I'm just wondering when that trigger is that we have a light on either Downey or Edward. And maybe there's ways of planning for that in the future as the traffic increases, so that we don't have two lights. Just some stuff to think about. I'll go over to the commercial component then. I, I, so daycares and those, those kinds of social services and that kind of stuff really makes sense to me. This is close to downtown. It's, in my view, very walkable. We have South Side Market there for your milk or whatever is, is there. Again, this is government money going into. I, I question whether we need convenience stores, those, those kinds of things in this. So when we're looking at as a CD zone, I, I, I guess I'm seriously questioning that. Maybe there's been public input on, on that. I understand the component of services, you know, supplying the community. But I, I'm, I'm hesitant on that, that aspect of it. So that's just, again, a comment. And then I think my final point is the organic waste that we just had a discussion before. So the developers really look at how we, how, how organic waste, because now we're going into full recycling of all organic waste. And this is, I would like to see a model example in this development for communal organic waste, the compost, compostables. That's my comments.
Great. Thank you, councillor Palmer. Any other comments from councillors?
I think from day one.
Go ahead, councillor Palmer.
From, from, from day one, we, at the election, the housing issue was, was, was a priority for most of it. It's wonderful to see 175 units become available. The sooner the better. We can work out the, the bugs and logistic on the way, but this gives us a range of housing for seniors, for singles, moms, whatever. Just that we've got such an assortment coming in one entity that we're desperate for it. So I think it's a big win. And I think we can solve the problems by being open and constructive along the way.
Perfect. Any other comments?
One for, sir, go ahead.
Well, I just went, what's the shovel go on the ground? At the best case scenario?
Any comment on that, Mr. Simon?
Through your worship to councillor Palmer, we are working with the proponents to get the development permit application in, so that we can have that kind of coming in, in the background, I guess, from the rezoning OCP amendment application. The goal is to get the rezoning OCP amendment before council and, and through the review process and before community for public consultation as part of the public hearing as quickly as possible. So I guess I would have to defer to the proponent as to when they are anticipating shovel ready. But from Development Services staff side, we're looking at getting approvals in place ASAP.
Hello, sir, through the chair to, to council. We are hoping to get into the ground next year, pending, of course, that we satisfy all of the municipal regulatory requirements. One of the other pieces that is really big for us that we have to determine, that we haven't yet determined. A part of it is going through the community consultation, is finding our operator partner. So your nonprofit housing sector operators are really key to our success. And so we've reached out and we're, we're connecting. I know one of the really interesting discussions is about workforce housing and how we might connect that community sector group of housing providers with major employers or civil service employers, notably M T service and, and schools or teachers, education. And we have, how we might bridge that to really, you know, as soon as we can open the doors, really fill that up. It is part of the equation that we will need to, to solve. And of course, because we are government, I have to go for competition to determine who will that be. But I'm trying to, trying to drum up the program and the intention and aspiration out there. So we're already in connection with that sector. But in short, the answer to your question is, as soon as, as soon as we can next year.
All right, councillor Burksell?
I just wanted to reiterate what councillor Elliott was saying. I think it's great. And I really appreciate staff at BC Housing working on this. One small thing, and it is quite small. I, I would really, I, I noticed there's quite a large number, maybe not a large number, but there's quite a few trees right along the property lines on all the different edges. But I'd really like to see those retained, especially the ones that border onto the existing properties. I guess kind of on the northeast side. From the photo, it's impossible to tell if they're on the BC Housing land or the neighboring properties. But I, I think it would be a sign of good faith for the neighbors if you left the trees there.
Something that can be discussed as a forward, it's save the old growth forest. Anyway, so councillor Palmer had made some comments. Do you want to talk about any of that stuff, or is that something that we can talk about down the road? Just in, you know, connectivity as, as we move forward. I know you're going to go out to the community for input, but any comments at this point? Or would you prefer to do that when you go out to engagement? And then, and then councillor Palmer and then maybe other councillors will have some comments for you. How do you feel?
Through the chair, you're speaking to BC Housing, you're speaking to staff?
Yes, I am.
To BC Housing, I, I'd like to work with staff. I think we've got a very collaborative relationship with staff as well as all the other departments, notably that are, main port of contact is planning. I have heard your comments. I, I know it'll be read into record as well. So there's lots of time for refinement. As far as planting plans and landscaping plans, again, those can also be refined and addressed. We, we wouldn't want to put anything to garish or offend the neighborhood. So of course, those things will be taken into consideration.
All right. Appreciate that. Councillor Elliott is almost jumping over steps.
Is, is the plan to do it in phases? Once you get to the building stage, would it be one, one, one unit at a time or?
Correct. It, it'll be one phase at a time, in part to do with constructability and our ability to lay down and store materials, et cetera, on the site. And it allows us to, to access and basically load the building one, one at a time. So we won't be constructing all three buildings all at once.
And then the, and the build would be circulated for proposals? You'd look for a builder in your, you'd circulate the construction to various contractors for development?
They would be going up for competition as we typically do, whether it's through us or through our nonprofit, whichever way the, the money ends up flowing, it would be open for competition. We always like to try to engage local builders where we can, recognizing that it's got, it's a really, it's a really great piece when you can build for your community and your community.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions, councillors? Seeing none. Mr. Simon, any further comments?
To your worship and all of council, thank you for giving us the opportunity to present to you today. And to councillor Palmer's comments about the addressing, I did double-check the CD zone and cannabis retail sales is not a listed use. So we will see what we can do about the, the addressing for sure as we continue to progress with, with this project. So appreciate the comments and it's very helpful for us as we continue to work with the proponent and start refining some of the comments. And we're really excited to not only bring this forward, but also the, the development permit in the future to you guys. So thank you.
Great. And Mr. Simon, thank you to BC Housing for being here. And we appreciate the fact that you're working in our community to better it with housing. Just say thank you very much. Appreciative. And thank you for all the work you're doing. All right, council, we're going to move on. So Ms. Floyd, just to confirm, we have no more departmental updates for the day. Is that correct?
That is correct, your worship.
All right. Thank you. All right, council, we are done this Committee of the Whole meeting. I will ask for someone to make a motion, termination of meeting. Counselor Elliott and Counselor Shalat, all in favor. Motion's carried. We'll take a five-minute break and then we will morph into our next meeting. Thank you. It's not the the twenty-minute important stuff that's going on for.
We're still live.
Yeah, we're gonna go into our other meeting, so we'll just keep it going here for a minute.
Lots of details today.
Yes.
But progress.
Well, it's nice to see all this stuff coming to fruition, right?
Talking about so long, now we can actually see some numbers.
Yeah, it's pretty awesome. I know it's it's a lot to take in, but it's good to to see this coming forward.
You know, you look at rocks, it's exciting. That's good.
It's nice to see that happen.
We're trying, yeah, I didn't even figure that.
No, that's all I've been thinking about. So thanks for bringing that forward. Living experience.
Well, it's not quite the same how it used to be. No, it's bad.
Yeah, it's looking at those little things because it just takes one thing and then.
Yeah, that's a good pick-up. Well, it's special to be impactful to those who are wanting to break that cycle with those who are seniors who don't feel comfortable with that terminology.
So while on the bit of the survey, but the parts I'm reading, the seniors were very, it's both very, there's very little commentary for these were seniors. And I just wonder if that's, I see that, I'm getting the whole, I'm feeling anxious these days. But I just think that the future is going to be the baby boomers migrating into old age, then then maybe that's something we should do. Business opportunity. I see it's an opportunity because I think.
So work at it.
Tell my daughter to go into seniors, seniors care, you know, geriatrics.
Yep, I get it. I'm looking at a quicker viewer. Anyway, it is what it is.
Len and I are at fifty-five. He's getting closer to the fifty-five mark.
Oh, yeah.
An awful years, to be fair. But as long as he's fifty-five, I can just sneak in there, right?
Oh, I see.
Take the road through.
Don't even, don't even start thinking that way. Because sure as hell something will happen. So just go. You're going in, going in as a spouse here. It's just a free run. All right, so staff, we'd like to get started here. So I'd like to call this special council meeting of November sixteen, twenty twenty-one to order. I would like to ask for an adoption of the agenda with an amendment that the agenda be adopted as amended to include in-camera item ninety point one A. So Counselor Palmer, seconded by Counselor Shalat, all in favor. Motion's carried. I have no further announcements today. So we are going to move on to five A bylaw. So all three of these bylaws we've seen in Committee of the Whole a few hours ago. And so that someone want to put number five eight on the Counselor Shalat?
The Municipal Officers and Management Employees Amendment Bylaw, number two, three, oh, eight, be read first, second and third time.
Second for the motion, Counselor Palmer, discussion on the motion. Anyone want to have any further discussion on this? We've talked about it in Committee of the Whole. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item five B. Someone want to put that on? Counselor Shalat?
The Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Bylaw, number two, three, oh, nine, be read a first, second and third time.
Second for the motion, Counselor Palmer, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. And item five C. Counselor Palmer. He wants to speed on it.
The indemnification by law twenty-three, ten, be read first, second and third time.
Second for the motion, Counselor Brooks Hill. Discussion on the motion.
So just further to Committee of the Whole, staff that sent the previous indemnification by law, which was actually adopted in twenty seventeen. So I thought it might have been come out an older one because I thought it was quite dated. But I did look through the two and this, the new one is much better and more complete. And it's looking after our committees and our volunteers where the current one was admitting some of those components. Thanks to our C A O for bringing that up and helping us bring that up today.
Good. And it's nice that it's that you've looked at it quickly. So we appreciate that. All right, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. So we have nothing further, so I would like to go in-camera pursuant to the Local Government Act ninety point one eight. Someone want to make that motion? Counselor Shalat, seconded by Counselor Brooks Hill, all in favor. Motion's carried. So now we want to make sure that we stop the live streaming stuff.